Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Brown, School Board Chair. I call this school board a special meeting to order at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. In accordance with the schedule, school board meetings approved by the school board at their January 14th, 2025 organizational regular meeting pursuant to Bylaw 1-46 and Virginia Code 2.2-3707, the school board will hold this special meeting today, Tuesday, 4th, March 4th, 2025. The purpose of this special meeting is for presentations on Budget Workshop Number Three, Consolidated Benefits Overview, Mid-Year School Support Update, Fiscal Year 25-26 School Board Proposed Operating Budget, and Fiscal Year 25-26 Through Fiscal Year 30-31 Capital Improvement Program Discussion by School Board and School Administration. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair Brown. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. At this time, please join us for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance as you are able. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? I don't think we can do modifications right now, anyway. Okay. I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Moved by Dr. Green, seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the agenda as presented.
Vice Chair Weems, how do you vote? Thank you. Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thank you. And that brings us to Budget Workshop Number Three, Consolidated Benefits Overview. And at this time, we welcome Crystal Pate, our Chief Financial Officer, and Linda Mattkins, Director of Consolidated Benefits, and David Keoey, Principal Senior Health Benefits Consultants.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. As requested, this next presentation is on our consolidated benefits with a concentration on the health plan. As we continue to focus on providing comprehensive and competitive benefits to our employees, we want to ensure that you have a clear understanding of the current plan, any upcoming changes, and the overall direction of our benefit strategy. To guide us through this discussion, I am pleased to introduce Linda Mattkins, Director of Consolidated Benefits, who will provide insights into our benefits program. Additionally, we are joined by David Keo, Principal with Mercer, our third-party consultant, who will walk us through key aspects of the health plan and share expert analysis on trends and cost projections. Please keep in mind that when the presentation turns to healthcare cost projections and employee rate comparison, it is important to note that only the employer contribution affects the operating budget. Employee premiums refer to the amount that employees pay for their health insurance plan. At the end of the presentation, you will have the opportunity to ask questions. And with that, I will turn it over to Linda and David.
Good afternoon. We'll be going through the presentation to talk about the plan oversight. So, sorry.
Can we pause for just one second, please? I forgot something. Mr. Cummings had a statement that he wanted to make. And so, if you wouldn't mind allowing him the opportunity to make that, thank you.
Oh, thank you. And for the public, just to avoid any conflict of interest, I'm recusing myself from discussion tonight on health plans since I work at Centerra Health Plans. And so, I don't work with any negotiations, rate settings, or have access to any VB School Board data or health plan data. But to ensure transparency and integrity, I will not participate in these discussions, provide feedback on benefits, or answer questions related to health insurance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Go ahead.
Regina? Regina? It's not working. So, we'll be... Okay. Sorry about that. Just walking through the agenda, we're going to talk about the plan oversight, the health plan offerings, the cost considerations, and talk about some key observations. And the appendix is there for reference. The schools have a joint benefits executive committee with the city. It's led by directors and executive leaders in human resources, finance, and benefits to provide oversight of the health plan. Crystal Pate is the lead executive as Chief Financial Officer and oversees the Consolidated Benefits Office for the schools. And Monica Krosky, the Deputy City Manager, is the executive lead for the city. So, the managing health, the health plan and offering it to our employees is very complex. And the BEC strives to reach all of these goals in doing so. There's a lot of moving parts, financial aspects. And so, we aim to offer affordable, quality care, control costs, maintain the healthy and productive workforce, achieve best prices, focus on health risk, promote a culture of change and accountability, and promote health awareness. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to David Keo, who's going to walk you through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Linda, and thanks to all for having me here this evening. I'm happy to discuss the health plan offering. And we'll start off, there's a lot of terminology in here, and I probably won't read everything that we've got in this glossary here for you, but wanted to make sure that you're aware of some of the key terminology. And those first three there, deductible copayment and co-insurance, they describe the aspects of a plan that generate employee or patient, if you will, cost sharing at the time the services are rendered. The plans do have a maximum out-of-pocket per year that protects individuals in the event of catastrophic needs. The actuarial value, that speaks to the value of the plan and specifically the percentage that the plan pays versus the patient. And that's an aggregate figure. And so, we'll talk a little bit more about that, how the plans are distinguished between each other. A few more terms on the next page there. The most significant of which is really high deductible health plan, HDHP. One of your options is a HDHP which includes an HSA, which is a health spending account. We'll talk about that a little bit more in detail. But if anyone has any questions about any of these terms or any acronyms that may sneak into the discussion, please don't hesitate to ask. So, this exhibit is an illustration of the plan designs that are offered to employees. And you'll see here, the column on the left is what's referred to as the POS plan, the Point of Service Plan. And that plan is the richer of the two. And you'll see these cost-sharing elements here. On average, it pays about 89% of covered services. So, if you think about it in aggregate, for all services rendered, the plan's going to pay about 89%. Patients through these cost-sharing provisions are going to pay the other 11%. The CDHP plan includes a health savings account, and that plan has a higher deductible, a little more upfront cost for employees that elect that plan. And that's why payroll contributions, premium contributions are lower to represent that responsibility. That's a little bit larger in that plan. And specifically, it's about 5% less rich. So, it pays about, or about 84% of total plan costs in aggregate. And so, it's really important. Part of the strategy has been for you all offering two plans. And that's really a strong strategy in that it allows employees to choose what's right for them. They can decide if they would prefer a little more out-of-pocket cost at the time they may need services and choose their payroll contributions accordingly. So, it's really a certainty concern for folks. So, they want to pay more in their premium for greater protection or vice versa. So, a little bit more detail on the health savings account on the next slide here, the components. The health savings account is an account that has tax-preferred treatment. Contributions are pre-tax, and whatever is not spent can grow tax-free, and then it can be withdrawn tax-free as long as it's applied to health care expenses. So, let's talk a little bit about the funding. The program is self-insured, and that means, in general, that you all are responsible for the costs of the plan versus fully insured, which is where you shift risk to another entity who bears all of the risks, not unlike car insurance where you pay a fixed premium. You might have a deductible, but all that risk is borne by the insurer. Under a self-insured arrangement, over the long run, it's the more cost-effective way to go. Self-funding, in general, will save, over the long run, 5% to 10% of total program costs. So, we'll be talking about some funding and some budgeting and some of the nuances here. And so, in case you're scratching your head thinking, wow, that's a lot of complexity, what's the value of being self-funded? And over the long run, that savings in premium or total plan costs is the benefit that is reaped. And we've got an exhibit on the next slide here that aims to boil that down for you a little bit. So, we at Mercer have actuaries and a lot of analytical staff that work with Crystal and Linda and the BEC to budget the plan based on data, very intensive data analysis. And so, this exhibit here in the first bar, you'll see, we project a cost. And that cost is based on decisions made by the BEC, divided between an employer contribution and employee contribution. And if we project the cost and they end up coming out exactly as projected, that split will be perfectly balanced between the contributions that were set for employees to contribute and the employer budget amount. So, that's in a perfect world. The bars to the right there reflect reality in that it's extremely difficult to get it perfect. So, in the bar to the immediate right there, if the actual experience is more favorable than experience, there is a surplus. And that is the benefit of being self-funded in that those monies are retained by the employer, by the entity. And that surplus would go towards the health fund. So, you'll hear us talking in some of these exhibits about the health fund. And that's the money that has accrued over time by way of surpluses that have materialized in the plan. So, conversely, the final bar there, when the actual expenditures come in above the projected, there'll be a deficit. And because the employee contributions are static and the employer budget amount is static, that deficit has to be taken from the health fund. So, each year, there's an impact to the health fund, and it can be positive or negative. So, you are self-funded. Your health plan is Centerra Health Plans is the plan administrator. They also offer a fully insured offering, so they're sometimes referred to as an insurer. In your case, they would be more accurately described as the plan administrator. So, it's the school's plan administered by Centerra. And they will pay the claims, they will provide customer service, they will negotiate with the provider community to get them to join the network and accept some discounted rates in exchange for access to members of the school's plan as well as others in their organization. So, this general framework of administration is identical regardless of which plan an individual chooses. It's really just those cost-sharing provisions that are different. So, who's eligible to enroll in the plan? We've outlined here those that are eligible to participate in this plan. And it includes employees, city council members, and school board members, retirees that qualify as described, spouses that do not have access to a plan of their own, an employer-sponsored plan, and then dependents up to age 26. So, we'll share kind of a quick snapshot here as to the demographics of your enrollment. You'll see here on the left side, the enrollment by plan and tier. You've got about 71% of your enrollment is in the Point of Service Plan, which is the richer of the two. So, that suggests folks are a little bit more risk averse and are making the election to pay the higher payroll costs to participate in that plan. One important element is there is 63% of all enrollment, plan participants, are in single coverage. Single coverage means they are covering just themselves, whether they are the employee or the retiree. They have not elected to cover any dependents, whether that be a spouse or children. So, that's the makeup of the plan. Linda referenced, there's a lot of work that goes on. The BEC puts a tremendous amount of effort, and Mercer is privileged to support them in that effort. The timeline here, we want to share with you all, because your plan year is a calendar year and your fiscal year is July to June, that means there's a little bit longer of a timeline in terms of making decisions. So, we just wanted to boil it down here for you to give you a sense of what that means. So, for the plan year 2026, the target is to finalize rates in May. And really, it's sort of past the point of making plan design decisions. But this is the planning that goes in here, and we'll talk a little bit more about it. But there are essentially two levers that you can pull if you want to influence the cost. And that's through employee contributions or plan design provisions. And so, you'll see for the 2027 plan year, we'll be beginning, really in the next couple of months, discussions about potential plan changes for that 2027 plan year. All right. So, we'll get into some detail here in terms of the finances. And that's frankly, the primary reason for the discussion here is to give you that update that Crystal referenced as to the current state of the financials of the plan. So, if I may, I'll orient you to, in this chart, the dark purple. This is a dual exhibit. The city is shown on the left, but we really won't address anything related to the city. We'll focus on the schools. And if I can ask you, please, to look at the 2025 projected column in the middle. We'll talk about some of these numbers. And please stop me if you have any questions whatsoever. So, the 2025 plan year, we're just a couple of months in here. The projected gross cost was $118 million. Employee contributions, which were set in the form of the payroll rates last year, are going to contribute $9.4 million to offset that cost. And that leaves a net cost for the schools of $108.8 million. So, the budget, the cap budget amount was $99.8 million. And so, that means the difference in that cost comes from the health fund. And we'll talk a lot about the health fund. We've got a couple of exhibits where we show you the balance of that health fund over time. But at the end of the 25 plan year, our projection in that first light blue row is $11.6 million. So, that figure, that amount, has come down over time. And that'll be, you know, we're going to focus on that in great detail. What we'll talk about is for the projected two months of reserve is what has been the strategy, the recommended strategy, and generally accepted plan is to have, maintain two months' reserve on hand. So, essentially, $19.7 million that you see there is 2/12 of $118 million. So, the challenge is, what we're projecting at the end of that year, $11.6 million, is only about 60% of the recommended surplus balance of $19.7 million. So, we'll talk about 2026 in more detail when we get to some of the rate discussions. But the key takeaway there is, when we project out plan costs for 2026, this is one scenario of employee contribution increases. We'll talk in more detail about that. But that deficit, or that negative impact, I should say, on the health fund continues such that the fund's debt would drop down to $4.6 million. So, this is a... That's exactly what we want to address. And the reality is, is that the health fund, from an exhibit purpose, the reality is that it cannot go negative. The funds have to come from somewhere. And so, what we're trying to do here is strategize on some options to be able to proactively address that. So, again, this exhibit includes some city information on the left, really for reference only. We'll focus on the schools on the right there. And so, you'll see some volatility in the claims experience. And if you look at the total column, this is the school's experience. And PEPM stands for per employee per month. So, we want to normalize all of the spend based on a per-employee basis. And you can see these most recent two years of trend were 15.7 and 9.8. General industry trend is 7.5%. That's what we're using to project year to year. So, anytime there's an excess of that, the reality is that there'll be a deficit, and then the health fund will be impacted. So, that was the reality of the situation that we're, you know, that we're really forced to respond to now. All right. So, through a lot of numbers actually on the last page. And this is some historical context. So, the takeaway here is, again, there's three components of the fund, of the mechanism by which you fund the program. And that is the health fund, the employer contribution, and the employee contribution. And so, this gives some historical context as to the amounts in each of those buckets and what's happened over time. So, quickly, if you look at 2022, that split, based on the actual results, was about 80/20 between the employer, the health fund comprises the employer responsibility. And then the employees were at the $16.9 million, about 19.5%. At that time, there was favorable, very favorable experience. The health fund balance was actually growing. And there was some detailed analysis done to understand the competitive pressures and your desire to attract and retain employees. And so, there was a strategic decision made at that point to invest into the plan in the form of reducing employee contributions. And so, you'll see, in 2023, that cost share went to about 91.9. We'll round. And then in '24 and '25, the employee contributions were not increased. They were held flat. And so, those decisions were made based on the dynamics of the time and the data and the favorable fund balance. With the combination of increased trend, the challenge has been that the health fund has been dramatically influenced. So, the 2026, again, we'll talk about that a little bit more specifically. But this is just a potential scenario that calls for an increase to the employees and the resulting impact there. All right. So, the fund balance, we talked about the dynamics that contributed with the excess trend above projected. And then the implications to the fund that we talked about. You can see that graphically, that the fund balance has come down significantly. And the figure I mentioned is 11.6. That's the health fund balance as we project it for the end of 2025. 2026, it's projected to go down to approximately $4.6 million. And again, for reference, the desired target, which represents two months' reserves, is $19.7 million. All right. So, my intention here has been to describe the circumstances that sort of generated a call to action, if you will, and to present to you some scenarios and help you see the implications of those and to both, not only the school's budget, but also importantly, to the employees. And this chart here represents all the components that we talked about. As you move left to right, it's split between actives and retirees and point of service and CDHP. And again, we'll focus the conversation primarily on the point of service, given that 71% of the employees are enrolled in the point of service plan. So, the next page will probably, is probably a little more visually friendly in terms of looking at these rates. But again, it's a proposed scenario, and we want to break it down, get really granular so that you can understand the implications for employees on a per paycheck basis. So, let's go to the next slide if we can. All right. So, this is honing in on just the employee contributions. So, you'll recall that, I mentioned in 2022, the contributions were such that it was about an 80/20 split. And at that time, the decision was made to materially reduce them, to invest in the plan, to reduce those contributions for 2023. So, we're just, this is just a comparison before the reduction that was implemented in 2023. So, for this particular scenario, and again, we've given you, we've got two scenarios. This is the higher of the two in terms of what would be asked of the employees to contribute. And that 2020, well, the first chart on the left is the 2025 contribution. That's the current contribution in place today. So, for context, you can see all those red negatives. That is how much, for each of the tiers of coverage, how much the current 2025 contributions are lower than the 2022 contributions. If you move left to right and compare the current 2025, so that column carries over, and then 2026, this is the scenario that I'm referencing here that is just one. And again, these are decisions that we'll be working through with you all's guidance. So, this scenario here compares, this proposed option for 2026 compares it to 2025 and shows the increment. So, on a per-pay basis, it's about $10 for this particular option. And of course, that's on a... And of course, that's, that's on a, the, the, the contribution would be on a pre-tax basis. So the, the real feel for that dollar amount is, is actually a little bit lower. So when we compare this proposed 2026 option in the box below, again, just trying to provide some context because we're at, you know, this option is asking for an increase. And so just to provide the context, okay, let's compare that back to the 2022 rates. And you can see the differences there. So they still, while they are, are an increase from the 2025 level, they are still about 36% below the contributions that were required for employees for the point of service plan in 2022. And they're about 23% below those folks for the CDHP plan. And the, the rationale for the red call out box there is again, to focus on that single, that single tier, that employee only coverage tier, which is where 63% of your folks are enrolled. The next page, we've broken out the retirees. I think we're, we're probably not going to focus on that unless, unless folks ask me to do so. But we've got the exhibits in here for the retirees as well. I think we'll, we'll jump to the next option, which is, was option two for another rate scenario. So again, we've got the red call out box there around that, that single tier for point of service. And this is a, this is a, a little bit lower of an increase for the employee contributions. And you can see there on that single tier, it's about $4.46. So is there, is there any questions at all about that? The, the next page is similar to the one we just looked at, shows the rates with a little, little, little more visually friendly and breaks it down. Again, just to provide context, compares this 2026 option to both 2022 rates and 2020, and the current 2025 rates and gives you those increments.
Okay. I have a couple of folks in line. So Ms. Melnick.
Just sticking with this chart because I have other questions. But what does this mean, the increase? Does that change? These are employer and employee contributions, but does that change deductibles?
No ma'am. The plan design at this point is, is not changed. This is just focusing in on the contributions.
Okay. So option one would be an increase of, I need two pair of glasses to read.
I can relate.
Option two is less of an increase. I just want to make sure that.
That's right. And, and so they are, and they are options to consider that will provide relief to the health fund. So we were honing in on the fact that the health fund balance is below desired levels of target level.
That's the key right there. I have to be able to explain this to people. So this is rocket science, rocket science. You just taught me how to get to Mars. And I have to turn around and go out to the public and explain this in a very simple way. And this is not simple. And so basically it's to help with the health fund. It's to help manage the health fund. And I still have to be able to explain that. And so that's what I'm trying to.
That's right.
That's, that's my goal when you're finished.
That, that's right. And, and, and the overarching goal here is, is long-term sustainability for the plan. One, one measure of which is the status of that health fund and having that reserve be at a level that makes everyone comfortable, that you can withstand volatility year to year and have a reserve on hand. And so increase in the contributions, the difference between the two, the, the higher or the lower of the two options, the difference is a 1.9 million dollar additional contribution to the health fund.
Okay. I have two more questions, but they're back from, I'm going to put my name back in the queue. And when you're all finished, I'll have a few more questions.
Ms. Rogers.
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. You kept saying over the long run that being self-insured is supposed to be savings. How long have we been self-insured? Since 2000. And do we have any idea of what the savings we've had since 2000? Because I feel like in the long run, it's been 25 years. Perhaps we have an idea. Any chance?
Well, I think we could go back to the slide that talks.
That's okay.
The slide that talks about self-insurance goes into the details of what you don't have to pay for as a fully insured plan. So David went over that a little bit, but when, when you have an insurer that's providing you premiums, they're going to include risk in that, right? So you're not paying risk. Sorry. You're not paying risk. You're not paying some state tax on that. You're not, you, you are, to, to his point. Let me get back there. It's not moving.
The self, yeah, the bar graph.
A little bit further back.
The one, I think it's 12? 12.
So to, to get to Ms. Melnick's question, like the, the health fund is the employee premiums, the retiree premiums and the employer contribution. And that's what makes up the health fund. So when David was talking about, you know, th- those contributions are based on what we think the costs are going to be. They are projecting with all of their actuaries and determining what we think the costs are going to be. And so when those costs are less than projected, that's when you're building, you know, there, money increased in the health fund, right? And from slide, I can't see the number, 21, you can see how healthy the health fund was at one time to a point of, wow, there's, you know, a lot of money in the health fund and what are we going to do about that, right? And then to his point, if it's greater than expected, if trend is greater than expected, you're drawing down the health fund. So in years prior to, or up to 2022, things were going pretty well. There was the pandemic where we, prior to the pandemic, we even had a good trend during the pandemic, good trend. That year following the pandemic, cost increased a little. It was a little higher than normal, but that's where people returned to getting care. And then that next year, it was low again. So that's when the decision was made, we're going to provide more in employee, towards employee premiums. And, and so that's, you know, really talking about the self-insurance is you are not paying profit to the insurers. You're not paying risk to the insurers and some other fees to the state. And, and so that, in the long run, have we been able to measure that? No, because we didn't get what fully insured rates would be.
Got it. Okay. That, that was the first question. I appreciate that explanation. I think it is really important to understand, you know, the difference of what we're paying as opposed to what we could be paying if we were not self-insured. The next question I kind of have is based on slide 15. It was interesting to me that we have enrollment by plan and tier that it's mostly subscriber only. And I'm wondering, like, I don't have an idea, but I'm assuming that a lot of our staff have families, but they're not having their children be under their insurance, which I find to be interesting. Would it be? I, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the more people we have that we're insuring, especially that are healthier, the less expensive it would be, or is it not that way for self-insured? Only, and, and I guess my question would be like, should, is there something we can do to, and to? It would be beneficial to have more families in the plan, I guess is what my question is. Is that more beneficial to our insurance costs?
So not necessarily.
Okay.
Law of large numbers says there's more predictability and perhaps more stability, the, the bigger the rate of enrollment and the, and the, the higher the, the rate of membership.
Yeah.
So there, there can be some more stability. But with more bodies covered under the plan come more claim expenses, more administrative expenses, and you're paying those. And, and, and to the extent that, that utilization that folks bring when they enroll in the plan is not covered by the incremental, if someone moved from, from single coverage to, to family coverage, that incremental premium doesn't cover the risk.
Okay. Cause that was, I guess, something that I wanted to know, that if we had more families, would it be more beneficial to us? I guess is what my question was. But I mean, you're saying not necessarily. So that's.
Generally speaking, it, 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 it would not be beneficial.
Okay. And then on slide 22, you have that box. Is that a monthly cost or per paycheck? Cause our employees get paid the 15th and the 30th-ish of each, or last day of the month, 30, 31, whatever it is. So is that pay increase that, like the 1041 you have in the box, is that per paycheck? And maybe that's.
Yes, that's, that's per pay. So the, the red box, we tried to call it out, but it went right through the header there.
Yeah. I just wanted, I wanted to differentiate if it was a monthly thing or a per paycheck thing. So that would be 1041 per paycheck.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's my questions.
And I'd like to add about self-insurance. When we're talking about fully insured versus self-insured, is fully insured, the insurer is going to group you with their, the rest of their book of business when they're setting rates. And when you're self-insured, you are actually paying the claims that are incurred by your own members.
Right. So basically if there's not a lot of claims, it's less coming out of our health fund.
If, if you think about that, you're going to have some good years and you're going to have some bad years. Under self-insurance, you're going to benefit when you have a good year because you're not going to pay that. And the money that's in your health fund will remain in your health fund. Under a fully insured environment, if you have a good year, the insurer keeps that money and then they start all over and set your rates for next year. And if you have a good year, again, you, they keep that money. So that's, that's Linda referenced. They build in a risk premium and there's state premium tax. There's certain mandated benefits. And there's a profit margin that they want to make over the long term. So they're building all of that into the rate. But the most significant element is you never benefit when your program has a good positive year.
Okay. So we're going to do Ms. Weems first, then Ms. Melnick, since Ms. Weems hasn't had the chance to speak.
Thank you. So in '22, when the fund was nice and big and we made such an adjustment, because I can remember that conversation. I can remember probably unanimously that we were all thrilled to help our employees by reducing their premiums. Did, were we too generous or did that really not matter because of just good year versus not good year?
Well, as David demonstrated, you know, the average trend was 7.7?
Yes.
7.7. But in 2023, we had 15.8, I believe it was. And then the next year, it was 9.8 on top of the 15. And that was just extraordinary. We're, you know, analyzing our data, trying to understand. There's a lot of high cost claimants. Pharmacy costs are high. But it, it looks like it might be coming back down. Hopefully it's a, a year of normal trend. But we couldn't predict that. You know, we had such good trend for years and made that decision based on a very healthy fund balance and having good trend. And it was just, with the, the high cost, the high trend that we had is really what brought us to where we are today.
So is there, so there's really no magical number that you need to kind of like have in that fund balance?
Well, it's not magical, but it's desired.
Well, okay, desired. Like, like, I mean, like we have reversion funds. We have, you know, certain numbers, certain percentages of where we try to end up in our budget. So what is the desirable?
So, so the desired amount is 19.7 million. And the rationale for that is that on, in general, we want to keep a, a, a fund that will cover two months' worth of claims.
Okay. Okay. That's very helpful.
And if you think about the balance, previously there, you know, there could have been a, a position to say, wow, this fund balance is so big. Let's, let's disperse it in one manner or another. The fact that you elected not to, in, you know, disperse more than you did means that it was available to cover this exact scenario where we saw volatility that was in excess of industry averages. So seven and a half percent trend, what was realized was the 15 and the 9.8.
Okay. Okay. Great. Okay. Thank you.
My apologies. May I also add, because Ms. Weems, you recall, I was in HR at that time and I brought forth the big push on reducing our employees' compensation. If you remember from the annual survey, our benefits package received the lowest rankings. And when we did a comparison, we were paying much higher out-of-pocket costs than many of our neighboring districts. And so the feedback around our premium costs is why we in HR spearheaded the push to reduce the out-of-pocket premium costs for our employees as part of, of our recruitment and retention package. And if you recall, that was the year that we opened school with the fewest staff vacancies that we had seen in quite a large, a long time. Because as our employees indicated, that was a big chunk of money they were able to see returned to them. And so I wanted to share for those new on the board, that's how that came about. And, you know, it was a lot of conversation around, you know, what amount and how much as seen, you know, in the charts. But I do believe it was a huge benefit for us at the time to retain the staff we have and then to recruit new staff. And so I wanted to be able to share that piece. And then Ms. Rogers, you had a great question about the family plan. One of the things we also see, we have a lot of married couples in our division who don't have children. And they're savvy and they realize, like my husband and I, that it is cheaper to do two employee-only plans instead of the employee spouse plan. And so that's a conversation obviously within families. And I think that's one of the reasons why you see that. And once upon a time, you know, when we both had our two children, I'd carry one and he'd carry one. Because those of you who've been around, we used to have the double family incentive plan, which was nice. And so when that went away, you know, you had to then pick an option that worked best for you and your family. But that was a great point, Ms. Weems. And I wanted to say, at the time, I would definitely do it again because we opened with the fewest vacancies. And if you notice on our employee surveys, benefits is no longer the lowest ranked items on there. People have been very pleased with it.
Yeah, I know. We were all excited for it.
Thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay. So I'm a business owner. I shop insurance every year. I pay $2,400 a month for health insurance for three of us. Because a family plan is a family plan, whether you have nine children or whether you have only one that still qualifies. I get how debilitating and how taxing this is on businesses. We are a business. It's, this is, this is a lot. You mentioned, I know we're consolidated benefits, but you mentioned a term. I just want to, I want to clarify. When the city has claims and when we have claims, are we grouped together or separate?
They're separate.
Okay.
Back in, up to 2022, the consultant would look at total just to determine what the, the total cost was. So for point of service, employee only child and so on, there would be a total cost, right? And then there would be the employee contribution that was the same for city and schools. And then the employee contribution was the same. However, even when that was in place, the monies are not together. They are managed separate, the, in the health fund, they're all managed separately with the different accounts. And then in 2023, when we made this change, now they are totally rated separately from each other. So when they're looking at what is the total cost for point of service for employee only or child or whatever, they look separately at the schools from the city. But again, even in 2022, the, the monies are not pulled together.
Okay. But when you put out an RFP, right, I'm assuming that's what happens. That's what I have to do. I, we shop. How, what we choose, is that the same as what the city chooses? We choose one. How many companies respond to our RFP?
That process is underway as we speak and I'll be able to give you a definitive number in about two and a half weeks.
What was it last year?
Well, the, the last time, I believe it was four pharmacy PBMs, pharmacy benefit managers and three medical carriers. Is that right, Linda?
Yes.
Okay. And it. Okay. And it comes down to cost?
Yes.
Clearly, but.
Um it comes down, so under the self-funded arrangement, what they are doing is they are they are selling their administrative services. So in the big scheme of the total plan, the hundred and eighteen million dollars, um only five to seven percent of that is actually administrative fees and other uh revenues that go to and stay with the plan administrator. The other ninety-plus percent is the claims expenses that we monitor, and that's that self-insured element. So do we, do we look at the cost that the uh bidders will propose to administer the plan? Absolutely. And it's it's not unimportant, but it's a relatively small portion of the entire program cost.
Okay. So when I was a teacher for VDCPS, um my husband and I kept our own insurance. He had his, I had mine. But I always had choices. So we were given a a couple of choices, two or three different plans from different companies. Do we not do that anymore?
We haven't had two carriers since two thousand and three.
Okay.
Um, I believe, um, I think I missed out, but and I in two tha- in two thousand, we became self-insured. And I think in two thousand and one, uh we had Anthem and Centerra in two thousand, so we have not had two carriers in twenty-five years. And what you see with that, too, is that there's um adverse selection. So people will go into one plan and then that one will cost more and they go back into the other plan. Um what our consultants do for us, Mercer, David's team, when we do an RFP, they are looking at the provider costs that the carriers have negotiated rates with. So they will look at our claims and say, if we were with this carrier with their pr- provider rates, this is what it would have cost versus what it it did cost. And so when he was talking about cost, there is the admin fee, of course, that we're going to look at. But we also need to look at what what are going to be the claims cost, you know, what will they be? And then what it, it, you know, if if there was a negotiated rate of a thousand dollars for an MRI for one carrier and eight hundred for the other, that will cost us less.
Okay, fair enough. I was just curious. All right, thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Sorry, you said something and it reminded me. Um you talk about the increase of pharmacy costs. And I know that our next-door neighbors uh in Chesapeake have their own pharmacy. Is this something that we have discussed? Or do we know that if that?
We've discussed it.
Okay, so I was wondering if that was something that we had looked at.
We did. We did an analysis in twenty fifteen and again in twenty twenty. Um I um obtained um um drug data from three different vendors. Um one is the one that Chesapeake uses, another that does the same type of thing, and then from our own plan. And we would not have achieved savings to the point that we could have offered um an in-house pharmacy in both of those analyses.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, I just have one very quick question right at this time because I want to hold all my comments until the end. Um, so I see EE in the codes, so I know that's employee, but is ER employer? Okay, I couldn't find that. I just wanted to make sure I was following along. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify your questions. On slide twenty-nine, we've got, we'll we'll try to sort of summarize this for you. So again, the three components of the funding are uh critically important. The ability to project and react year to year is important. Um and so from the contribution standpoint, you'll see in that first bullet, employee premiums remain flat from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two during that period where trends were favorable, uh outcomes were 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 solid and and the health fund reserve uh grew. That twenty twenty-three plan year that we talked about um was a strategic initiative for all the reasons we described, to help with attraction and retention, uh to uh disperse some of the the health fund in terms of an investment into the plan. Uh subsequently, higher-than-expected trend, uh over fifteen percent and and just under ten percent. Um and I'll I'll add in there, there, one, the confluence of events, um uh one of those is that it was the sort of rapid growth of specialty pharmacy medications. Um wonderful medications and therapies that are are life-changing, changing for so many, but come with a significant cost. That really started to grow in that particular uh timeframe. Um and so, again, the call to action here is to consider the increase to employee contributions for twenty twenty-six uh to offset the health fund and find that balance that is achievable and and desirable uh by you all. Um and that we mentioned the the uh industry standard of of having two months of reserves. Uh that's that nineteen-seven uh figure that we are targeting. And then when we look at the scenarios, we're me, you know, we're automatically looking at what what if we if we increase the employee contributions, what exactly does that do? Or what is it likely to do based on our projections to the health fund? Um and so I think I mentioned there's essentially two levers when you're trying to control costs. One is the contributions that we've talked about, the other is on the plan design side where you could increase deductibles or increase cost sharing that would uh shift the the contribution responsibility to employees uh as they access care. That needs to occur um early, so really twenty twenty-seven, uh based on the timeframe and the 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 planning cycle that we talked about, uh twenty twenty-seven would be the plan year where where that option could be looked at if desired. And it would need to be done in conjunction with the city, since the plans are currently currently shared. And so we I we we touched on this last bullet here, there there is an RFP right now that is is underway. We're waiting on on bidders and we'll be doing that analysis uh with the the hopes of of selecting uh the plan administrator that's the most um cost-effective and uh value-added in terms of the services that they provide to your employees. We're hoping to wrap that up um by uh by by late May or early June.
Okay, so before I move on to anybody, I just want to make sure that everyone on the board understands the conversation because there was option one and two presented. And so my question is, are you looking for direction from the board?
Yeah, so not right now. Uh the reason we're having this conversation right now is, one, uh the board made a request, but we were planning to bring this to you anyway because it is part of the budget process. Um with with option one, which was the higher increase for subscriber-only, it was ten dollars and forty-one cents a paycheck, so over ten paychecks, that or over twenty paychecks, that's two hundred and eight dollars. Um under the second option, it was four dollars and basically fifty cents, which is over twenty paychecks, ninety dollars. So as we s- we talk about uh compensation increases for staff, which I know is important to this board, um there's going to be an offset by some dollar amount based upon how much we put in or how much of a change we make to the employer employee contributions beginning January first, twenty twenty-six. So we'll need to have another discussion with the board um in in probably March and April leading up to the May timeframe. Uh but this information, again, is important and the two key dollar amounts are, you know, one option was ninety dollars for subscriber-only, over twenty paychecks, and the other one was two hundred and eight dollars total over twenty paychecks, so.
Every time you repeated those numbers, I didn't have my pencil on my paper.
Yeah, so the.
The first time I thought I got it, and then the second time you said it, I was looking straight at you.
So the first option was subs- and this is just subscriber-only option.
Okay, option one.
Ten dollars and forty-one cents over twenty paychecks is roughly two hundred and eight dollars.
Okay.
The second option we showed, which was roughly four dollars and fifty cents, over twenty paychecks, is about ninety dollars. We got a bunch of teachers here, they can check my math. Um and so that's a, those are real dollar amounts that should be considered when the board is considering compensation.
Okay. All right, with that, oh, there we go. Ms. Rogers?
One more quick question. You talked about us having to work with the city with the plans, but we have two separate pots of money. Is that simply for us to mitigate our own employees? Like, I'm kind of just wondering, like, same plan, separate pots of money? Is this what we do?
So the pla- the plan design is the same.
Okay.
Um, we have not explored having different plan designs and any cost that that would incur with our third-party administrator to do. Separate plans, because right now they're administering it. So everything they're doing in their administration and their setup and their, you know, deductibles and pharmacy and everything is is one time.
Yeah, so, okay. I just didn't, I wanted to make sure I was understanding that we have one plan that they offer to ci- all city employees. But the city employ- um not that we're not all city, but the school employees have their own separate like pot of money as, I'm just calling it, with their own sa- and they keep that separate.
So the um, the school's finance department actually manages the health fund. So all of the monies that are coming in, they do are, they are accounted for with separate plan codes and and uh employer codes. So when the monies are, you know, come into the health fund, they're man- you know, they're allocated appropriately. And then when they're paid out, they are allocated appropriately. So, you know, we administer it the same, it's just that when the mon- the monies are managed, they are accounted for separately.
That's what I was asking. I want to make sure I had it clear. So it's one plan, two separate pots of money.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
And and I'll I'll just add real quick, the the value of you all being a combined entity for the plan administrators, you can leverage that size, that that combined enrollment to uh negotiate with with uh plan administrators in terms of fees, getting the most cost-effective fees.
So my questions relate more to how this ties into the CION, so I think they're more for Ms. Pate. Um, so in our CION, there is eight million dollars um in increase in employer health insurance contribution. And so this is, I just want to make sure that the public's understanding and all of us are understanding that eight million dollars is related to the increased cost that was just presented.
That is correct. We increased the employer portion. As they showed you the timeline, we are able to do that at a different window than what we can look at an employee rate change because that employee rate change is effective January first of each year. So we know what the plan looked like and what kind of issues we were struggling with. And so we knew we had to make that employer contribution. So yes, based on the presentation and the challenges that were spoken to, that is why that employer contribution is there.
So that sounds like it's a pretty important piece of the CION for us, this particular budget, to make sure that we're doing that so that our employees have all those benefits in place and that we don't go into a deficit there.
It is absolutely a very important piece, yes.
All right. And so we're not discussing, besides the CION, that part in our CION, the rest of it's for a future CION. Okay, thank you. Questions? Mr. Culpepper, I'm going to have you go first, since you haven't had a chance to speak.
Sorry, I had a question because of that answer. Um it's probably kind of bitty a little bit. So on the in the CION, it's eight million dollars. And you briefed earlier that the uh um the current shortfall from our target of two months um in the fund was shy eight million dollars, right? So I I associated those two numbers together because you're the numbers you threw out here for uh two thousand twenty-six, based on your option one and option two, look like you're targeting uh ten point one million dollar increase in contributions to the funds. Is that correct?
It is, because we do it, because we are on a fiscal year and that is a calendar year. So we've already done it, one employer contribution effective January first, twenty twenty-five, and this fiscal year, because we've had two. And so this is just the piece that you're seeing for the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six for the CION. And then, so it does equate to that kind of money when you talk about a twelve-month period.
Okay, so this is on your slide again. It says January to June, six point one million dollars. So we've already contributed that?
We have.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, that looks like all of our questions. Thank you so much. We are now going to be moving on to our mid-year school support update. And we welcome Dr. Danielle Calucci, Chief Academic Officer, for that presentation.
If I can just tee up this presentation a bit, one of the things that I've heard from board leadership and other board members is how critical it is that the board sees academic data as soon as it's available so that that we can um share that data with you and talk about the things we're doing in support of that data. And so here is an example of such a presentation.
You're, oh, okay, it's working now. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Dr. Robertson, and school board members. My name is Danielle Calucci, and I serve as our division's Chief Academic Officer in the Department of Teaching and Learning. In October, some of you recall, I gave a very comprehensive overview of each of the offices housed under the Department of Teaching and Learning umbrella. Eight offices in totality live in our department. Today, I was invited, as Dr. Robertson shared, to share some of the mid-year data that we use uh across our various teams to ensure that we are progress-monitoring and responding to school needs. So I will go back and review some of the information from October for some of our new members to our school board. Um but mainly today, we'll focus on just a couple of the offices within our department. So we'll begin by taking a look at an example of an elementary literacy data point that's very important to us in the Department of Teaching and Learning as we work in partnership with our division's teachers. Here you see uh middle-of-year and beginning-of-year data comparison from the Virginia Language Literacy Screening System, a mandated assessment through our state. We refer to it as VALS. Some of you that have worked in the division previously or have been on the board remember this called PALS. Um it's very similar, but there are some significant changes as the Virginia Literacy Act has updated how we are delivering instruction. Um this assessment screens for bands of risk. So that's an important uh difference. It's not like a grade-level assessment that you would be accustomed to. It really looks for students who are in danger of having a lot of reading difficulty. And so here on this screen, you see that at the beginning of the year, twenty-five percent of Virginia uh Beach City Public Schools kindergarteners scored into the high-risk band. Middle of the year is the orange bar, and you see that dropped about twenty percent. So a huge celebration for our teachers who are working so hard every day. And these data points, our Elementary Language Arts Team digs through down to the student level to help teachers and partner with administrators to ensure we're targeting the exact skills that our students are showing that they're missing so that we can get them out of that band of risk and take away that danger that they will not be reading on grade level by grade three. It's important to know, because this is the first year of full implementation in the state of this assessment, this is a baseline year. So the mid-year um bands of risks were adjusted this year. And so we don't have comparison data for you, but we will next year. Our pre-K team in Teaching and Learning is also very busy analyzing pre-K VALS data. Unlike um the K-three data, this um, it doesn't put them into a band of risk, but it subtests very important foundational literacy skills um into different bands, strong, um growing and beginning. And so here on this screen, you can see some of the skills that we're analyzing closely as a team and then responding to school needs, shifting even, providing more VALS staff as needed and helping our pre-K teachers to disaggregate this data. This uh shows the percentage at the beginning of the year of our pre-K students that uh scored within the strong foundational literacy skills, meaning they had very well-developed foundational lit- literacy skills such as recognizing letter sounds and letter names um and being able to segment syllables. Um, and then you see that number grew, so we are making great progress in our primary grade levels um, implementing this assessment and with our instruction. So I'll give you a moment just to look at the growth that has occurred from the beginning to the middle of the year. And that type of data analysis and professional learning that our teams provide really help to ensure our pre-K students, when they enter kindergarten, have sound foundational readiness skills so that they can be successful. So those are just two examples of some critical data that we're looking at in support of our schools. This gives you a more holistic view of what those two offices in our department also have on their plates. It's a massive amount of work that our content specialists hold um, in all core content areas at the elementary level, serving fifty-six schools in so many different things, from grant management to um, monitoring ledgers and spending and staffing and looking at all of that data to make informed decisions. It is um, an unbelievable lift, but it's great work. Um, instructional coaching is happening one-on-one daily at our schools to partner with our teachers, professional learning, data analysis meetings. Here on this screen, you can see our math elementary coordinator just last week. Um, this team prioritizes being in schools, working with students, and supporting our teachers. Now let's look at another source of data that we um, have decided to review this year. We are using for the first time in Virginia Beach, the N W E A MAP Growth Assessment Data as V D O E. Um, they passed legislation in our state saying that we could use this as a replacement, um, an alternative, I should say, to the Virginia Growth Assessments. And so we're very interested in trying this. It's a nationally-normed assessment. Um, it's computer adaptive, which means that it will adapt to the individual child. So the child sitting next to another student is going to get a different series of questions because it changes um, depending on how a child answers questions. And so it is not, what's important to understand is that this is not a grade-level assessment. So it's not assessing exactly what a teacher has taught in her classroom that year. It really provides an overall picture of a student's strengths um, as compared to nationally, um, national peers that have about the same amount of instructional weeks than our students. So it's a great source of data to use in conjunction with other data points to make decisions about instruction and to really understand our students. We are using this in grades two through nine this year and through Algebra I. So a high school student in Algebra I will also take this in math. So, just to give you an example of the the good data that we're getting from this assessment, we pulled out one of the reports that our team is working alongside schools to help address student needs. Here you see a growth quadrant chart. And um, this, as you see on the right-hand side of the quadrant, this is a picture of a class report. So as I said, we not only monitor divi- division-level data from our team, but we go in and we support teacher teams and individual teachers and looking at their students as a whole class to see what the whole class might need reteaching or strengthen or maybe some scaffolds. But we also look all the way down to the student level. So what we really appreciate about this report is we can see where a student is strong and where they start to miss about half of the questions, the test will stop. And it will also track growth over time, which is really interesting to us to understand a child holistically. And so, for example, here, you can see um, a student that scores, um, for example, in the red quadrant may benefit from extra practice or small group instruction in several areas, while students in the yellow cu- quadrant might need more challenging material. And so if we have a high-achieving student, for example, with low growth, that could indicate to the teacher, let's go deeper with this child. What kind of advanced um, problem-solving activities might I challenge this child with? So we're excited about this, we're still learning about it, um, but we think it's a great tool um, to use, like I said, within a balanced system approach, a balanced assessment approach. So you might be wondering, well, Danielle, if that one doesn't assess what's been taught, has been learned, what else are you using to make sure what is taught and expected to be mastered in a grade level or a course is mastered? And so here you see an example of a teaching and learning um, assessment that, for example, our teams create. And so um, this is an Algebra I example, you see the problem on the right that students would have to solve, and this is an assessment that we would use alongside other data points such as teacher observation assignments and assessments and the MAP. And um, this helps us to ensure and make adjustments with the teachers um, to see who's struggling, what schools might need more tutoring support, coaching support. Um, and it helps us to be very strategic as a division. I, we did take out the Algebra II one, and we put the Algebra I in instead. But I told our math expert, you're making my eyes spin, and I'm getting a little anxiety again. So um, anyways, I do want to say that just shows you how rigorous our coursework is. Um, we have uh, our only three secondary math members on our team. And so when you look at our department as a whole, you might think, wow, there's a lot of people in that department. But it's made up these little micro teams of experts, and that's what makes this division great. The uh, math team, I believe, at the secondary level is responsible for twenty-eight courses all the way through A P um, math courses that are extremely hard, discrete math. Um, and these are the people that we need going out to our schools to provide that one-on-one, side-by-side support. How do I navigate this curriculum, this assessment data and such? And so, of course, we also use S O L data um, to monitor progress, and um, I'll give you a moment to see that. Now, of course, an S O L assessment is very similar to the assessment that you just saw, but that assessment was a unit assessment, so a unit in time, so that we can respond very quickly. The S O L does the same thing, only the whole course. Here you see um, some results from our Term One um, Math S O Ls. And you can see from fall of twenty twenty-three to this fall, this school year, the results of those assessments. And on this screen, uh, you can see our English performance from Term One. Uh, recall that expansive change from the state took place in the area of English because of the Virginia Literacy Act this school year. Um, for Term One, it is important to note that the two thousand seventeen English standards were assessed. So in Term Two, the new standards will be assessed, so that is an important point that I wanted to make today. This small team also supports all middle, high school, um, academy teams and teachers. Um, and they have uh, about twenty-six courses that they are responsible for developing curriculum assessments, unit assessments, um, and one-on-one coaching and team coaching and professional learning every day in our schools. Next year, uh, their work is gonna expand exponentially again when the Virginia Literacy Act um, has implications, more implications for middle school, because in middle school next year, um, as you recall, the VOWs data that I just covered with elementary, it's going to expand to grades four through eight. Next year is an assessment, which is gonna involve a lot of time, a lot of training, professional learning. And students who score in the high-risk band in grades four through eight will now also require a student reading plan and intervention, just like our K-three students. Um, so that will be a tremendous lift um, that our team is positioning themselves to support our schools in. And here you see biology um, performance from Term One this school year. Twenty-seven secondary courses exist for our team of two um, secondary science experts supporting that. And that brings us to social studies and a little update for you. The locally awarded verified credit process provides an alternative to end-of-course S O L assessments, allowing high school students to earn verified credits for graduation. Instead of just one single test, students are required to produce a body of work in accordance to state guidelines. To earn a verified credit via the locally awarded verified credit assessment, students have to show mastery of all course standards and pass at least three of the four performance assessments. This rigorous body of coursework is then reviewed by a school-based panel to determine if each student in need of a verified credit met the requirements. Here you see the preliminary results in World Geography, World History, and Virginia U.S. Studies for students in need of that verified credit. It's important to note that V D O E um, says that they need a one. Virginia Beach wasn't satisfied with that as a threshold, and we require a score of a three. And that brings us to, I know a topic that you're very interested in, um, is work-based learning and readiness. Um, year after year, our Career and Technical Education Team strives to ensure the number of credentials earned by our students grows and that students have access to the exams which will move them forward in their career journey. Last year, the students in Virginia Beach earned a hundred thirty-five industry cred- credentials with fourteen thousand three hundred thirty tests passed. The majority of our students graduate with multiple credentials, and it is important to note that these are the same professional-level tests that adults entering these industries have to pass. So they are not high-school level tests. Um, and note the progress during the fall semester of this school year, as eighty-four hundred assessments were administered with sixty-eight hundred credentials earned. The pass rate for fall was eighty-one percent, and these results do hold steady with previous years. At the bottom of the screen, you see more highlights. Um, recent work includes our U.S. Entrepreneurship uh, Certification Exam was given for the first time this fall, and it held promising results as well with an eighty-six point three um, percent earned this new certification. Our D T L team works tirelessly in partnership with our amazing teachers to support such progress. At the bottom of the screen, also note that seven Virginia Beach High Schools were recognized and awarded the Blue Star Status for Performance on the WISE Financial Literacy Exam. Schools have to achieve an eighty percent pass rate um, on those WISE assessments um, or have a majority of their students achieve a score of eighty-five percent or higher. Additionally, twenty-four of our economics and personal finance teachers were recognized as Gold Star teachers. A WISE Gold Star teacher is a teacher whose students pass the WISE test at a rate of ninety-three percent or higher. I just uh, provided just a little glimpse of what the team is busy doing right now, but this provides a little bit more holistic view of the massive amount of work that's taking place in the secondary teaching and learning and C T E teams to provide high-quality curriculum, professional learning, coaching every day, and assessments. You'll even catch our teams in the warehouse packing boxes um, and delivering and helping get materials to our teachers, packing pallets. There's nothing they are not doing to support our schools. And the Department of Teaching and Learning acts as the link between V D O E and our division. I wanted to share um, the last few V D O E communications, which they push out to divisions weekly because they need to communicate actions required or responsibilities that must be fulfilled. As you can see here, almost all of the weekly communications fall to our department. And so when those come in, we review them, we take action, we communicate, and we support. Here you see all of the offices that fall within the Department of Teaching and Learning. We support all academic areas, including core content, electives, dual enrollment, advanced placement, I B, special education, gifted education, academies, health and P E, world languages, academic and career planning, visual and fine arts, student support services, social work, psychologists, and more. This department directly works with staff and students related to state-mandated content, state and federal monies, regulations, and services. In October, I did provide that overall update that may be helpful for new board members who would like to view it. But I'm always happy to answer any questions that you may have, or one of my team members. Um, our goal in this office is to ensure student success in alignment with the three E's framework. It is an absolute honor to work beside the wonderful teachers and administrators in this division, and we consider it a privilege to serve them. And at this time, if you have any questions for us, we are available to you.
Ms. Felton?
Ms. Calucci, thank you for that deep, detailed update on our students. I was just um, interested in the U, United States Entrepreneurship Certification Examination, eighty-six point three percent. Does that include the Kinsale Business Academy, uh, the um, Advanced Technology Academy, and all the ones that did that name? Does that score include all of those?
Yes, I believe it does, but I will confirm that with Dr. Lockett for you, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Ms. Rogers?
I swear, I always have questions. Okay, so I was looking at your um, data on slides nine and ten. Um, I know that with the four-by-four, that our students are also taking S O Ls in the spring. Are we just just comparing, like, are we, I was just wondering what wasn't included?
They haven't taken their spring data.
Oh, so you don't have this year's spring data?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because there's fall of twenty-three, and I just was wondering where spring, like?
We compared the fall to the fall.
Yeah, and that's totally fine.
We can certainly provide you last year's Term Two results.
Yeah, I was just curious, only because um, I know sometimes uh, with with the fall and spring, it's a, it could be different. Um, the other question that I have is, what grade level was the English Term One testing? Because I don't, I mean, I know Algebra I is like ninth and tenth grade. Geometries, eh, ninth, tenth grade, Algebra II is tenth, eleventh. What did we do for English? Do we know?
Just eleventh.
Okay, I, it wasn't written, so I didn't know. Thank you. Um, and then what was our timeframe for geography data? Was that the fall-to-fall as well?
Yes, all of it, I believe, included fall-to-fall.
Yeah, I just didn't know what that was. I was looking at it, and I was like, okay. Um, and then you have listed under secondary teaching and learning.
Actually, I'm, I don't think that we did that one on that slide. And we're implementing L A V C two in more schools this year, so if you're wanting to compare that, I would have to follow up with you.
That's fine, I just, I was kind of trying to follow you, like, the framework, and I was like, I don't see what it is, but that's fine, I just was wondering. Um, for secondary teaching and learning and C T E, you guys have listed academies, like, what? So with the academies, like, I, is it the coordinators that go, that are under detail? Like, what is that umbrella?
Are you asking how we support the academies?
Well, it just says secondary, like, you have lists of things that you guys do, which is like observations and facilitation of meetings, and it just says academies, so I was like, I'm not exactly sure what that means.
So all of that we do for our academies, so observations, coaching, support. Mr. Quinn, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning, um, provides oversight for the academies, the curriculum supports them, and and they're all very um, nuanced. And so he facilitates a lot of their um, collaboration and helps them.
Perfect, all right, thanks.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation, Dr. Calucci. Um, one of the things that I One of the things that I would suggest you may want to highlight in the work that is done in the Department of Teaching and Learning is in reference to the cross-office collaboration, such as on Slide four, you have listed the things that your elementary team that they do, and these are some of the same tasks unless things have changed since I left, that our secondary office, such as the time that is spent in school support team meetings, SRT meetings, as well as working with our staff in OPEC to make sure we are in compliance with curriculum and other needs as well throughout the division that ensures that all of our students are successful. I had flashbacks of the warehouse from when I had oversight for summer school. So everything you say, I was like, oh, they still do that. But I think it's important for everyone to know the interaction, cross-office collaboration that takes place, you know, such as there are a lot of things that elementary would provide support to, say, for a student who has a new IAP or working with the OPEC coordinators. I could go on for days about my former office, Student Support Services, that's the thread through everything that takes place in the school division, such as academy recruitment, registering kids for courses, summer school, et cetera, well, things. So I think that is an important piece to make sure everyone is aware of, that there's a lot of cross-office interaction and everyone is codependent on each other.
Thank you. You're correct.
Vice Chair Williams?
Thank you so much for this. Yes, we're doing a great job with the vowels, it looks like, and the pre-K. I actually like the NWEA MAP test. I mean, I find that one very interesting. I'm a little familiar with it from other schools as well. I know it does get kind of exhausting for some of our students to take that test depending on how they continue to answer and continue to take the test. Some people, it's a real quick test and some it's very long, obviously, but I do like that test. My question is, can you at some point at your convenience give us a chart of how much assessment's going on at all, like, elementary? This is all the assessments, middle, this is what they have to do in high school, because although data is very, very important, we still hear that our children are, you know, being tested and assessed quite a lot. So I would just like to get a chart so I can kind of get my head around it.
Absolutely, and that's something that weighs heavy on our hearts. We don't believe in over-assessing. We try to make our DETL unit assessments short and brief, just to make sure that we are progress monitoring, but we don't want them to be over-tested. One good thing with the NWA MAP, if you recall, we used to be required to give the Virginia Growth Assessments and that's one of the reasons that we decided, let's try the MAP this year because it would take away, we used to have to give the RI at the beginning, middle, and end of year and the Virginia Growth Measure. Now we are not doing that, so we have removed that, which is nice. Now there is an end-of-year MAP measure as well that we're going to use to inform remediation and finish strong, but that was a nice reduction. The RI isn't available anymore for schools, so it was, it made sense at the time to get rid of a couple of those assessments that our students had to take.
Okay, yeah, if we could get that chart, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you, Dr. Kalucci, for such an insightful and wonderful presentation and I found the NWEA part specifically exciting, just going through it, and I appreciate that a lot. I hate to ask you because I'm asking you to repeat a number because I missed writing it down. On Slide 12, you mentioned how many students participated in one of the credentials, I believe?
Oh, okay. Let me go to that.
And I apologize for making you repeat here, so.
Oh, quite all right. Let's see, we had 14,330 tests passed. Is that what you were looking for?
I mean, I think you said something about the test pass, but did you also mention a specific number of folks who took the tests? Or did I miss here? It's humanly possible I misheard.
Let's see, I don't see that number.
I think you referenced the number of students that took the test so far was a little over 8,000 with over 6,000 have passed for an 81 pass rate. That might be what I heard.
Yes, but it's assessments, so it doesn't, it could have been kids taking more than one, so I can find that out for you, though.
Ms. Felton?
Dr. Kalucci, thank you again so much for taking out questions. I had a flashback when I saw that math problem, went back to precalculus, went off to college and like, wow, blew my brain. Precalculus was a bear for me, but I got through it. I'm looking at the Slide 11, looking at that also brought out my history major passion and my profession as a librarian a couple of years back. So can you provide for me the title of those books, the edition, the editions of those books and the authors of your world geography? You probably have already done it, but I missed it somewhere along the line.
Oh, the textbooks that we're using?
The textbooks that I'm talking about, Slide 11.
Sure, we can follow up with you on the textbooks.
Thank you. I know with history comes a lot of memorization and just repeating, repetition, so I'd just like to know the title of the books, the editions, and the authors as well. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't see any more questions, so thank you very much. I appreciate you. Next, we move on to Agenda Item Six, Discussion School Board Budget Workshop for Fiscal Year 25-26 Proposed Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Year 25-26 through Fiscal Year 30-31. And we welcome Crystal Pate, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Wayne, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. So this marks our third and final budget workshop presentation before you are asked to approve the proposed budget and CIP on March 11. This is the final opportunity to provide guidance to Dr. Robertson and staff regarding the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget and six-year CIP program. The agenda for this presentation outlined on this slide, as in previous workshops, we will review School Board Members' questions and responses. There are no updates on the state's budget at this time. We will review the proposed final fiscal year 2026 budget before I turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman, who will provide a CIP update and present the final proposed 2025-26 through 2030-31 CIP. We will talk next steps and then open it up for questions and discussions. So moving on to the questions. First question is, what is being purchased with $750,000 bus purchase line item? It is intended to purchase four propane school buses. The next question is, I'm interested in seeing a balanced budget that includes a salary increase to staff between 4% and 5% and includes a listing of what budget cuts would be necessary to achieve this goal. This information should include the services and staff that would have to be eliminated from our budget with a description of what those staff and services currently provided to students and how we could adjust to ensure our children's learning is not interrupted due to cuts. I'm particularly interested in understanding what steps the division has taken to lessen the layers of management in central offices, as well as what technology can be streamlined for cost savings, especially for our students in grades pre-K through 1. So this question has a few different requests included. I am going to provide information related to several compensation options that fall within the 4% to 5% range and the related cost of these options. For the remaining part of this question, you should refer to some of the emails that were sent directly to the board by Dr. Robertson related to those areas. The compensation options on the next several slides are what we kind of presented to you last week. Each one will reflect an option combination for the instructional step pay scale and unified pay scale. Please note, we do not have an option for the unified pay scale that increases the starting salary by 4% or 5%, only a 3% increase. So this first slide provides Option A for both the instructional and unified pay scale. This means for the instructional pay scale, the entry-level pay is increased by 5% and there is a 1.5% step for all eligible employees. This option provides an average increase of 6.41% for employees on the instructional scale at a cost of $26.7 million. Option A for the unified pay scale means the entry-level pay is increased by 1.5% and the step increments for years 0 to 14 go from 1% between steps to 1.5% between steps, making the entire scale have a 1.5% step for all eligible employees. This option provides an average increase of 8.10% for employees on the unified scale at a cost of $20.7 million. The total compensation cost for Option A for both scales is $47.3 million. As you can see, with the $8 million in the employee health insurance contribution, the budget request that still remain of $7.7 million, and keeping the allocation of vacancy funds at $11.7 million, we will have a deficit of $21.4 million. The next slide provides Option A for the instructional pay scale, which again is the increase of 5% to the entry level and a 1.5% step, and the 6.41% average increase at a cost of $26.7. Then we have Option B for the unified pay, which is currently in the CION. This option means the entry-level pay is increased by 3%, but the step increments for years 0 to 14 remain at 1% and for 15 and above, they remain at 1.5%. This option provides an average increase of 4.23% for employees on the unified scale at a cost of $10.7 million. The total compensation cost for this option combination is $37.4 million. Again, employer health insurance, budget requests, and vacancy allocation numbers remain the same, resulting in a deficit of $11.4 million. The next slide provides Option B for the instructional pay scale, which is the entry-level pay being increased by 4% and with the 1.5% step increments. This equates to 5.42% average increase for employees at a cost of $22.5 million. And then we show it with Option A for the unified, which is what you're, on the first slide that I showed you, the 1.5% increase in starting salary and then moving all of the increment steps for 0 through 15 plus to 1.5, so that would take away the 1%. Again, that was an average cost on the unified of 8.1% for employees at a cost of $20.7 million. The total cost for this combination of options is $43.2 million. All else remains the same, resulting in a deficit of $17.3 million. This next slide provides Option B for both instructional and unified pay scale. Just instructional, it's 4%, 1.5% step, and then average 5.42%, cost of $22.5 million. Option B for unified, what's in the CION, increase starting salary 3%, increments 0 to 14 or 1% and 15 plus at 1.5%. Average increase 4.23%, cost of $10.7 million. The total compensation cost for Option B for both scales is $33.3 million. All else remains the same, resulting in a deficit of $7.3 million. Slide nine. The next slide provides Option C for the instructional pay scale, which is the entry-level pay is increased by 3% with a 1.5% step. So even though this is not the 4% or 5% increase in entry-level pay, the average increase with this option is 4.43% at a cost of $18.4 million. And then we have it combined with Option A for the unified pay scale, which is the 1.5% increase of starting salary and the steps going from the zero all the way through the scale at 1.5% average increase, 8.1%, total cost $20.7 million. The total compensation cost for this combination is $39.1 million. All else remains the same, resulting in a deficit of $13.2 million. Last slide on compensation options. This slide shows Option C for the instructional pay scale. Entry-level pay is increased by the 3% with the 1.5% step, average increase of 4.43% at a cost of $18.4 million, combined with Option B, which is the option in the CION for the unified scale, entry-level pay 3% increase, 1% increment step, 0 to 14 years, 15 and above, 1.5, cost of $10.7 million. The total compensation cost for this combination is $29.2 million. All else remains the same, resulting in a deficit of $3.2 million. So with all this additional information on compensation options, please keep in mind that although we have not received confirmation on whether the state will provide additional funding or the potential amount of $16.3 million from the General Assembly session, if additional funds become available, these compensation options could be considered. We would simply need direction from the board. Continuing through questions, the next question on page four, under Program Number 610010, Transfers to Other School Funds, unspecified amount of $1,303,545. What is this? This is the local match for our early reading intervention grant. The next question on the very same page, under Elementary Classroom Object 603990, it states other purchase services, schools, unspecified. The total for these costs is $711,779. What does this number include? It is the budget for university instructors to cover half of the cost for 10 side-by-side instructors for elementary. And we called Dr. Robertson, shared with the board and city council last year during a discussion about the impact of a two-cent tax reduction, the additional cost that would be incurred to find qualified staff to serve in classrooms when no teacher could be found to ensure the students receive the content from someone who knows the content versus a general substitute teacher. The next question is, what is the total of any object description that states VRS in any portion? So VRS stands for the Virginia Retirement System. The total for all of those objects are $97,882,668. This includes VRS basic group life insurance, VRS hybrid defined benefit, blended benefit, VRS retiree health insurance credit, and VRS retirement. The next question is, what is the total of all object descriptions labeled computer software? That would be $11,625,515. The next question is, the total spent by the division on anything labeled dues and association memberships? I think a list of these memberships would be great, too. There's $212,966,000 is the total budgeted for dues and association memberships for fiscal year 2026. An email sent by Dr. Robertson to Chairwoman Brown on March 1 included a file that provided additional detail. The next question, the total of anything labeled travel, professional development travel. Some of these numbers are excessively high compared to others, given that the Code of Virginia, 22.1-253.135, standard five, quality of classroom instruction and educational leadership requires the school board to evaluate and provide professional development. I think this requires more information as to what type of travel, how many per department, and where to, et cetera, to the board. The total of this is $1,257,817. The total of this is one million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars, which includes amounts for funds in the operating fund as well as direct school allocations. An email also referenced earlier, sent to Ms. Chairwoman Brown on March first, also included a file that provided additional detail. There are multiple, next question, there are multiple instances labeled workshop, ranging from cost, uh, from two thousand dollars to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What are these workshops, and what are the payments being issued for? Are any payments being spent to bring in outside speakers? If so, why are we doing this and expending so much on travel for professional development? Workshop costs by department range from seven hundred and fifty-three dollars to two hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and six dollars. The email referenced earlier also included a file that provided additional detail. Outside speakers are rarely used by central office and schools. For example, in the past, we had a national speaker serve as the keynote at the annual summer leadership conference. But for the past two years, Dr. Robertson has served in this role. Now, other departments have followed suit and use our own staff to keynote many events. At the school level, motivational speakers are the most common, yet still a rarity, and their costs are in the range of five hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. In terms of travel, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is well-known and highly respected school division. As such, we are regularly asked to share our work with others at state and national conferences. In these cases, the registration and sometimes lodging costs are often incurred by the requesting organization, which means we only pay for travel to and from, and, and a per diem based on regulations in the business services manual. There are several examples we know of, and likely more that we do not know of, school divisions that have replicated our graduate profile, strategic framework, teaching and learning framework, and school support process. As in these areas, we have hosted divisions that brought entire teams to VBCPS, similar to Dr. Coons making a trip to see Biofit, and then asking Mr. Delaney to speak at the State Board of Education meeting about our work on Thursday this week. Again, over the past two years, the amount spent for travel has decreased as the budget has become tighter and tighter. The final question, as for the HVAC systems procured by the division, are we buying units that are LEED certified? While we look for HVAC, HVAC system replacements that are more energy efficient than those being replaced, individual, individual units are not designated with a LEED certification. HVAC replacement projects are designed to meet current energy efficiencies, standards, and codes. LEED is a rating system available for building types. School Board Policy three dash six seven considers LEED certification for new school construction and major renovations, such as at John B. Dye Elementary School. So moving on to the proposed final fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. So this slide presents our proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget. And since we have not received further guidance or confirmation of additional state funding, these figures remain based on our original balancing slide from the CION presentation. To allow staff adequate time to finalize adjustments and draft the resolutions for the March eleventh meeting, this is the last opportunity to provide direction regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget and six-year CIP. To recap, the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget is based on the governor's proposed state budget, which has, which has not yet been adopted. Revisions made during the general assembly session are currently under review by the governor, who has until March twenty-fourth to act on legislation. The general assembly is expected to reconvene on April second. Revenue sources within the school operating budget remain consistent with our CION presentation with an additional thirty point one million over our currently amended fiscal year twenty twenty-five adopted budget. The key budget priorities remain unchanged from previous discussions, and at this time, the proposed budget is balanced. I will, in full disclosure, tell you that as we were checking numbers up to about five minutes before this workshop, we have instructional, uh, compensation option seven showing at fifteen million. That number includes about eight hundred thousand dollars in grants that probably does not need to be on this balancing slide, and that will be corrected as we get final direction and any amendments we do subsequently. So at this point, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman to provide you information related to the six-year CIP.
I think maybe we ought to go back one slide and, and, uh, give opportunity for questions specifically rated, uh, related to the CION.
Okay.
And if, uh, one more, go one more forward. No, no, isn't the, there is the one where you have the very, I think we're missing a slide.
Should be just on two, oh, it does look like we're missing a slide.
Yeah, we're missing a slide. There it is.
I would say that.
Okay, there it is. Okay. So just a couple of things for the board's information. So in the creation of the CION, when we looked at the various options, and I do want to say that, that you do have with you an extra handout which lists eight different options that were presented to us from Siegel for, for teachers and for unified staff, and there's, there's a couple of documents here for your awareness. Correct, sure, you gave those out? I'm supposed to pass those out? All right, I'm supposed to pass these out?
You're doing a great job, though.
So let me, let me pass it, let me pass these out. Yeah. Yeah. So, seven options, okay. All right. So I'll wait till that goes around, and then, um... Because earlier, I sent an erroneous response to an email from Mr. Cummings related to option seven, and this is what you get when you don't go and pull the book and check before you hit send. So I apologize for that, which is really why I wanted to make sure you had these documents. So, a couple of things. I'd like to draw your attention to the chart, uh, on the screen. So the chart on the screen has the very last line, allocation of vacancy funds due to unfilled instructional and unified staff positions of eleven point seven million dollars, basically. And I've spoken to many of you about how uncomfortable I am with that number, um, because that number will absolutely impact the work that we do in Virginia Beach. It was a number that we had to use because our goal was to ensure, based upon the will of the board that you guys provided to the chair about what you wanted to see in the CION. The majority of the board, the overwhelming majority of the board, wanted to see a, a, a raise of at least three percent to keep us competitive with our neighbors. So to do that was how we arrived at the, uh, options provided on the CION for raises. The eleven point seven, again, makes me very uncomfortable. And I want to say that because when you look at the options here, it's an opportunity, you can mix and match the options. You can have an option three for one group, and option six for another group, or option five, and option four. There's all kinds of configurations that you can have. The time for that conversation, unless anybody feels very strongly, is going to be after March eleventh. Because we, the governor has until March the twenty-fourth to provide, uh, direction to the general assembly. The general assembly is al, already due to come back April second. We suspect that the governor will provide direction to the general assembly on or before March twenty-fourth. The general assembly will go back, uh, on April second and third and work with the governor to get a budget he can support. We feel very confident that that's going to happen. We also feel very confident that the, the education dollars that have been noted uh, by the general assembly to the governor could very well come to full fruition. We, we could see that amount. Could it be reduced a bit? Yes. But we do think we're going to have enough money for this board to have the good problem of what do you do with the extra money? And so this information is helpful to you over the next couple of weeks, because on March twenty-fifth, we're going to come back and have a single workshop, and that workshop focus is going to be, what is the will of the board? Uh, should we be, receive additional funds from the general assembly? Because we need to come back to you April eighth with an information item of any adjusted amended budget, which is something we've done before, so that it can be presented on April eighth, come back for action on April twenty-second, and time to have it over to the city council. So with that in mind, um, I'll turn it back over to Crystal for anyone who has any questions.
Sorry, Ms. Malnick.
I guess I should ask.
You should ask, there we go.
So that, those additional funds from the governor, ongoing, one time?
There would be one, there would be one time.
One time. Okay. So I did some math that I'm able to do, not that other precalculus stuff. Um, so clearly, we have a teacher salary problem. It, it, I mean, we all know that. We, we are below the national average. We have people in Richmond who desire to change that. But the difference between our salaries that we offer our teachers and bringing us up to the national average is a problem we cannot solve by ourselves, right? We can't. We need the state to, to ante up, and, and we all know that. Teachers today, the starting salary is fifty-four thousand sixty-five. I still have my, my original contract, Virginia Beach City Public Schools nineteen ninety. I made twenty-four thousand thirty. That was my starting salary. Um, that's a difference of thirty thousand thirty-five dollars over thirty-four years, which means over thirty-four years annually, our teachers have only seen an increase of eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Right? Like, start from start, starting point to starting point, not people who have stayed in thirty years. But there's only been a thirty thousand dollar increase in salary over thirty-four years. And I'll never forget that first year, I didn't even, we, they kept us at, at step zero in nineteen ninety, that, that first time. We have, we have a problem. And we need help. So I have, I always want to find something good to say, and I hope that our teachers this year recognize that this board is, we're behind you as best as we possibly can. Many of us were teachers. Many of us were teachers when it was a lot easier. It's hard. It is hard. But we have consistently given raises every year. Uh, we've tried to give at least three percent. One year, did we give, we gave more. We've gone from a hundred and ninety-six to a hundred and ninety-two encumbered days, leaving our teachers eight paid unassigned days. Those little things matter to me because those little things add up. Finally, we had a board that understood that the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, that we should not be in school. Finally, um, this board gave a two-week Christmas break, finally, right? I say all of that only to have to circle back around and say, Dr. Robertson, and members of this board who have served as long as I have, if we offer a five percent raise to our, to our employees, and city council offers a three percent raise, you know, you know what happens. And that's something that everyone needs to understand, too, because city council provides us forty-nine percent of their budget. And they don't want us to outshine them in, in, in the, uh, the area of compensation, because it's not fair in their eyes, after they've given us half their money. And so we've run into this problem before. I remember having a meeting with the mayor and the vice mayor, and we talked about that, and, and their response was, do you remember what their response was? We'll just keep your reversion dollars. And so we've, we've, we have faced that. And so people need to understand that piece is that when you rely on everybody else for your money, you sometimes have to follow rules that just don't seem fair. It doesn't. But that's our reality. And so, um, our reversion dollars are between twenty and thirty million dollars a year, correct?
Overall, but really, when you start talking about just the operating budget, because we, when we present, we'll break that down. Um, it's more like, uh, less than, that's like one point eight percent of the operating budget, because there is some other reversion, depending on if the revenue comes in over what's been budgeted, and, and then, of course, debt service, right now, currently is coming in under budget because we haven't issued any, the city hasn't issued any bonds. But that all gets factored in, which causes that to go up.
Well, and I understand that, but in the end, one-time spending money, that's where we get our one-time spending. The bulk of our one-time spending. Eighty-five percent, eighty-six percent of our money goes towards salaries and fringe benefits. One hundred, about a hundred million dollars right off the top of our budget goes to unfunded mandates, which leaves us two percent discretionary spending when it's all said and done. And so this is rocket science. So now we've gotten to Mars, and we've gotten to Venus. Um, and this is very, very difficult. It took me ten years to get to this space, really, of really understanding the complexity of, of budgeting. And it seems so simple, and in actuality, it's not. I mean, there was a question tonight about something that you, you see a million dollars here and there, and you ask, and then you respond, and it's something very simple. And you're like, oh, of course, right? So, um, I'm done soapboxing, but, um, we, we do have a salary problem, and we will recognize that. And we're just going to have to continue to, um, work on that and help people understand the value of public education.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, um, thank you for the presentation. Couple of things. Um, when I asked about getting a balanced budget that would give our teachers between four and five percent, I wasn't asking for the same thing that we had already seen. I guess what is upsetting to me is that, you know, there is an entire team of people that understand that without our staff, we don't have schools. We don't have anyone to teach our children. And whether or not it is fair or unfair, there isn't enough city employees to staff our schools without our educators. We need to give them the salaries they deserve, and there are plenty of people sitting up here and sitting in central offices that understand what each of their depart, department budgets are, and they know, or maybe they can go without a little bit. I know that when we talked about our CIP, we talked about, in our budget, we talked about households. And everybody knows costs are going up, and, um, even in my own home, my husband came to me and said, you know, he is an accountant, he budgets every single dollar, and he came to me at the end of this year and said, look at how much we're spending going out to eat. And I said, you're right, we're spending a lot of money. And so we had a conversation with our children about us going out to eat so much, and all of us together as a family decided, in order to help save money for the next year coming up, we're all going to make this one cut. It was something that we don't necessarily need, it's something we all enjoy, but we don't have to do it. But we made this, not as my husband, the head of household, not as my husband and I, the adults, but together, and it really, really, really makes me... I don't know, I just don't understand why the eleven of us are trying so hard to find a dollar here and a dollar there when we're not in the school division. Y'all are in there, you understand where we can save money so we can keep our educators. And I don't know why we aren't being told, hey, we can cut a little bit here and cut a little bit here because our, our staff is important to us. We don't want them walking out the door. And I just don't understand why we haven't seen that, because, you know what? Four to five percent is important. Three percent is not enough to keep our staff satisfied. When people, if you, if you saw the faces of the people who are left here, they look like they're about to throw up, because they deserve four to five percent. That's what I want to see for our staff, because they deserve it. And they're really, I understand that this is tough for everybody, but I... And they're really, I understand that this is tough for everybody, but I know there's places we can cut that we just like things, but we don't necessarily need them for next year to go forward. So we can give our staff what they deserve. And that's what I really want to see. So that's all I want to say.
Okay, I don't see anyone in line at this point in time, but, um, so first off, the Excel spreadsheet that have been sent to me, I don't believe that was sent to the full board, so I don't know if there's a way that that could. Yeah, the one with the workshops, memberships and dues list.
I'll have that sent right.
Okay.
Crystal, you have it.
Because I, I do think that, right, and I, I don't want to get into the electronic meeting.
Yep.
Business by myself, so I'll rather you send it. In going through that though, um, the amount and I, I think the amount up here on the presentation shows that we're really spending quite a bit as a division on travel professional development. And I know that, and I'm not saying that we need to get rid of all of it. But I do think that there probably is some room to pare that down. And I am concerned about that number, especially since I went through and looked at it line by line in our budget. And so I'm gonna offer this for consideration to my colleagues because while we're not voting on pay for play right now or the student activity fee right now, we will in the future and have to consider that in. Right now is really one of our opportunities to take that into account on how we're going to accomplish that end is here in this budget. And so I did some math that a ten percent reduction in professional development travel would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-one seventy. A removal of a PBIS coach, which doesn't mean we're removing the person's job, but we're removing that position. There's other positions that we have in this division that we do need to fill would be a hundred and twenty-nine, one twenty-one. Um, and then the panorama contract, um, for sixty-eight thousand totals three hundred and twenty-two nine oh two. The total increase needed for our student activities was six forty-seven, nine forty-one. This three twenty-two would easily cover, um, one, possibly most of two of these costs associated with that. And so I, I would ask that my colleagues and, you know, Dr. Robertson perhaps consider, um, these three items here to offset that particular request because, um, I, I've gotten some feedback from the community and, uh, I, I do not believe that the community supports that, but I do think that these athletics and student activities are very important. So, um, I offer those thoughts, I don't know if anyone else has anything to say about it. I know I just threw some off the cuff numbers that I added up while I was sitting here and before the meeting. So my apologies for the last minute throwing that out here, but, um, Mr. Cummings.
Yep, thank you for that. Um, and I'll echo Ms. Rogers' comments as well, the importance of looking inward, um, to identify cutting or waste or redundancies or really optimization in order, I think, to make us more competitive on the landscape with our, with both our educators and our staff. Um, in regards to panorama education, I would probably need more information on outcomes, students utilization, and some of the bigger, higher level objectives around that software and platform before considering any decision about it. As a new board member, I have not seen any evidence of its success or is this, or its lack of success. So that'd be something that I'd like to see before making a decision about that.
Ms. Rogers?
I do want to agree with, um, with the chair that I definitely want to see a way for us to not have to use pay to play. I think that there's a lot of inequities there, especially when you're talking about whether or not we have to have students pay for every single sport that they want to be in. This is going to limit their ability to, um, participate. There's also inequities with some families already pay for their activities for their students and, you know, because they're not supported and so would the fees then go to support every activity. And so again, this is where I, I do want to see something. I would say like with Matt, we would want to see more data on what you're requesting, but definitely, uh, I'm not, I would want to do something so our families don't have to absorb that cost.
Mr. Culpepper?
Thank you. Boy, I kind of don't know where to start. Yeah, because I mean, I totally agree with your, your points here. Obviously, uh, the superintendent also made the point that, uh, this isn't the end of the discussion with respect to these issues, and that is important. The other side of that corner, of course, is, uh, you're betting on the come, uh, to see what happens and those are things we don't know. But I keep in mind the fact that this is not the end of the discussion with respect to salaries or really any of this other stuff. Uh, for the chair, uh, I agree with those, those issues that you brought up, those are, those are great places to look. And I'm, I'm no fan at all of, uh, uh, an across-the-board, uh, fee for participating in sports or, or other activities in school. I think that's, I think that's a core function and it always has been a core function. So that gets us halfway there, which I think is good. The, uh, the only other specific thing I'll say on that is our, our policy on, uh, uh, travel for professional development is, I think all it really says essentially is it tasks the superintendent, uh, to come up with a policy with that. Ms. Pay, when you briefed, you talked about, um, out-of-state travel, for example, uh, where, where our people are speakers. And I actually think that's per, perfectly reasonable, uh, purpose for us to pay money to send people out, out of state. But I would say that for the vast majority of professional development travel, I, I have a hard time believing we have to go any, any farther than Richmond to accomplish the vast majority of it. So some of those expenses, uh, I won't say clearly, but I will say appear to be, uh, excessive, but certainly controllable. And I'm not implying anything nefarious, I'll just say that I think they're controllable, so a ten percent cut, um, is a good place to start, I think. So, uh, so in terms of eating the elephant, it just brings me to two things, neither which apply really this year, but are, are worth talking about in, uh, priming the pump, if you will, for how we go about our budget next year. One is, we, we don't really have a process for reconciliation, uh, for the board members, at least not one that's explicit. And we work with each other, we talk a little bit, but we don't really have a specific way of discussing among us, what, what, what do we want to cut, what do we really care about? I'd call it a little bit impromptu, not, not impossible, but very much impromptu. And it might be, it might behoove us to come up with a more specific process, uh, for reconciling the differences in the budget. Uh, and the second thing is, we're mostly building the budget based on last year's budget. And most of the time, that's, that's fine, but I think every once in a while, I don't, don't know whatever once in a while is, but it's probably at least every ten years, if not less than that, maybe five or six. I think it's a good idea to, to strip the budget down to nothing and start over and rack and stack all of these things that we do so that we can really prioritize what's most important to us rather than just, you know, what it feels to me like just chewing around the edges to try to make big decisions that you can't do, but chewing around the edges. And that's a, that's I think what we're really challenged with here, uh, this year is doing exactly that. So I would encourage us to look at that for next year, that perhaps we look at starting this budget process from zero, uh, for next year so that we can really rack and stack and prioritize the things that are most important, uh, to the school division. Sorry, that's a little bit off topic, but had to get it out.
Dr. Green?
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, for the information you provided with the numbers. I think one thing that we all are consistent about is giving our staff a good raise. Notice a good raise. So that we can be back up to number one. And I remember, as some of you do, when Virginia Beach was number one. The second thing, I, I, I don't know where we all are, um, with, and, and I think this may help staff in looking, when they go back to see where possible cuts can be made in addition to how we can get our staff the best raise, is I'm, I am not for the pay to pet, pay to play. As Ms. Rogers has indicated, Ms. Brown, it, 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 it creates many, uh, unbalances throughout our, our division for students. And, and I can see where it would create more problems that we would have to respond to later. So the requests, you know, I would have if, you know, we all can land on where what we agree on is needed. And then that way staff can go back and let, and find where the cuts, to cut. Because if we start cutting, we may cut something that may have other ramifications. But I think we should consider, we know we want a good teacher salary first, that's our number one priority. And I'm not speaking for the entire board, but I'm just basing it on what I have heard consistently. And then for me, my second ask would be no student activity fees. And, and I would just say, just find where you can make the cuts to accommodate, accommodate those two things. Because think about it, those are the two most important things that we have in the vision. First, our students, well, no, they're equal, students and teachers, because they're co-dependent on each other. And, and that's what we're about, our students and staff. And anything else, to me, is secondary. Thank you.
Mr. Bowenstein?
Well, I just want to say I pretty much agree with all the other board members. I'm definitely against the pay to student activities. I know we need to give our teachers more money. And I just, mostly just want to say that I agree with the other comments and that we have to look and find a way that we can do this. And, uh, I'm with the other board members on this.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, thank you. I was thinking a little more because something was said about, uh, the state funding not being, we don't know if it's going to be repetitive every year, year after year. And so we're, we are going to be tasked with finding a scalable structure to support competitive salary. And I think back to our, our January presentation where we were presented with options. And to me, it felt if we must, we must be competitive to remain in play as a top destination, um, for educators entering the field. And for me, you know, the first, one of the first things I'd be looking at is starting salary along with benefits. And so I am concerned about whether or not the benefit increase, how that, and does that negate portions of the percent of raise? That is, that is a very, that is a concern to me as well. And so it's hurtful that, you know, end up actually having to lose more money. You know, you think you get a raise, but then you don't get a raise because of, of the, the increase. And so those are some of the things that I'm thinking about because, you know, I think back to our earlier presentation, how important it was to be competitive in the landscape. And I also, my, my challenge is also, and I appreciate, um, our, our chair, you know, taking some proactive thoughts on how we can make up some deficits. And that is really my challenge is how do we build a scalable structure if, you know, we utilize these state funds, um, for increasing pay? And, because at some point, we're going to have to, you know, talk about it, um, probably next year.
Okay, I am going to, Ms. Felton, have you had the chance to talk yet?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna have Ms. Weems speak first, then Ms. Felton, then Mr. Culpepper. You can go ahead and keep your name in line though, Mr. Culpepper, so don't forget.
Yes, I, I agree about the, the pay to play with our chair and, um, yeah, I don't really know where to start either. I guess what's so difficult is, I mean, Ms. Brown and I called around to get everybody's party, budget priority, priority, and it was compensation. Nobody I called said, you know, we want to really try to give a six percent raise or a seven percent raise. Most said compensation is first and reasonable. So I think that's what the superintendent actually gave us. But I think if this board, it, we can go in line item and I've got the budget too and I've been trying to, to find some. But when you're talking about a significant raise, you're talking about millions and millions and millions and millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars. You're not talking about a hundred and forty thousand that you can save on pay to play. So I think this board, um, like Mr. Culpepper kind of said, if, if we want to start on the budget for next year and if we want an eight percent raise, we put that up there. But it's going to make significant, significant changes in how we run this division. Because we offer so much, I mean, we offer acad, I mean, academies, we can just go on and on about how we offer. But if the raise is, you know, an eight or ten percent raise or a six or whatever, then we've got to start all over from the very building blocks. And we've got to make significant hurtful cuts in my, in my opinion. Not going through and finding a hundred thousand here and ten thousand there. And of course, the main way that you can do that is add kids to the classroom. That's how you get, what, how many millions do you get when you, when you increase class size? Is it two million per, I, I forgot. You told us before. But you're right. But teachers, and I'm a teacher. And I tell you, smaller class sizes are, to me, I don't even know how much they're worth. I can't put a price tag on a smaller class size. So, uh, I guess my point is to be able to do this, we're gonna have to start and just make some philosophical changes. That if, and next year, if an eight percent raise is what we're going for, we've got to really, really make significant changes in how we run this division. And because you're not, you're not going to get it by picking line items right now when eighty-six percent of this budget is already going there. So we said reasonable ra, a reasonable raise is what I heard from the people that I talked with. That's what, um, Dr. Robertson has given us, a three percent. Hopefully the state, and I think we all are very consistent from what I hear, if that money comes, we want it to go, to go towards compensation. And that's what we've done in the past. But, um, I say that we really, um, Chair Brown, after this budget season is over and, when is our final budget vote, May what?
Next Tuesday.
Well, I mean, for the city to like do it all, May? May fifteenth. Okay, May fifteenth. I say in, in the summer, start talking about how we're going to do the budget next year and really tackle that instead of trying to pick little pieces. And it may take a whole shift of how we're running things if this board wants to go that way. Thank you.
Ms. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Brown. I just want to say to the audience and to my colleagues that are here, I'm, I'm, I'm very glad that most of my colleagues, all of us are saying, uh, compensation for our teachers because we do, we do need to be sustainable. But, you know, um, as I go out into the community and talk with our constituents and the parents and everyone asks us about what we are doing about teachers, I let them know that we are not a taxing entity of ourselves and that we depend on three entities to fund us to move forward. First, I'd like to say that I appreciate, and I was very impressed with, uh, Dr. Robertson and Mr. Freeman's, um, Ms. Pace, their integrity and the dignity that they held. We were in that CIP meeting. Because the conversation that you have to have with individuals that readily tell you, yes, we have a good school system. Yes, my children went through it, they're doing great. Yes, we use the school system to make sure that our triple A standard is up there. Yes, we pull people in to this wonderful school system, but we cannot fund you. We invest, we cannot invest in what we know that is good. And I just want our teachers to know that we are all in, we are all in. I am, like, Ms. Dr. Green has said, I can't speak for everyone, but I am in to make sure that our teachers get a good compensation or, or raise at a time. Because some feel that when they give them a one percent raise, they should be glad and just move on and be thankful. We've had, and I want our teachers to know and the public to know that we just don't have conversations among ourselves. I cannot begin to tell you how many, uh, delegates in Congress, all of the U.S. Congress, talking about our teachers and making sure that they do well. I know that they know that our school, our school is good because Dr. Robertson just sent us, sent us a letter from the Secretary of Education saying how good our school was and we want to entreat and bring in other people. So they know that we have a good school system, they know that we're doing, uh, things, uh, quite well. But our teachers and our staff have, have almost put themselves in a, in a position where they have done so much for so long with so little that they do not understand that we still need more. they have done so much for so long with so little that they do not understand that we still need more. I hope that we continue to have this conversation. I don't know where uh they're gonna, where it's gonna benefit us to get good cuts. But hopefully, the state will come through, hopefully. City Council will get their foot up off our necks and do what we need to be done right so we can move forward. I just appreciate our schools so much and our teachers for the work they've done. They have a a saying that they have now among, I was, among the teachers and the principals, I'm not gonna call their name, but it was a switch out when COVID hit. But our teachers continue to work and do the work. They continue to stand in the gap for our students. So I'm looking really hard and hoping that we all keep moving forward, making sure that our teachers for once be appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper? She's already had the opportunity to speak.
Okay, I would change the subject a little bit. I will defend City Council a little bit because they're doing the same thing we're doing. They've got, they've got ten pounds of stuff and five pounds of money as well. They have the same problem. Ms. Pace, for you, I I have to go back to that question I was asking earlier about um the plan. You might have to sit down with me uh later and translate between fiscal year and calendar year and how this works. Because I'm looking at the slide they had uh earlier on, and it, and it has all those numbers in there. Uh, hundred and ten million dollars coming from us. Uh, and that still shows, and and actually, and it has the option to increase from employee contributions built into it as well. And it still shows seven million dollar excess that's coming out of the fund, leaving the fund at four point six million dollars at the end of twenty-six. Is that, have you already compensated for that, or is that where we're going?
So what you see is what we've done except for the employee piece. And that's what's being, mm-hmm.
Okay, so even with the eight million dollars that's already added into the CION?
That's just for the employer piece. And so the employee rate is just, we're showing you the options for employee premiums. But that, of course, doesn't, has not been decided. And it's options of whether we, where we will be to be financially stable going forward. And we had some time to where we can see if the trend levels out. Linda made a co- a comment that she thought the trend was starting to go down. We're hoping that, um, but we have to watch that. But again, the same problem, we are well in advance of what the, when that cost is established and when that rate's established. But I'd be glad to sit down with you more and provide you any detail you would like to see.
Okay. Because look at this chart, what I see is a seventeen million dollar bogey out there that we still have to fill.
Well, you're, if you're trying to see whether we are at the two-month reserve.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Getting back to the two-month reserve.
Yes, sir, no.
We're not even tracking.
I'm trying, honestly, I'm trying to just keep it out of the red.
Right, exactly. That's, that's what I wanted to make, exactly.
You're correct.
We're seventeen million dollars from being where we want, want to be.
We're still trying to get to our two-month reserve.
Okay, exactly.
Ms. Rogers?
I was gonna ask Mr. Delaney, but he's not here. So Dr. Robertson, do you happen to know, I know, just got him at the wrong time. Do you happen to know how many classrooms that we have currently that are twenty-five students or more? I know it's a bit, I I know, I'm sorry. My, my, I know, you don't, and that's okay. My point was is that increased class size is already happening. We already have some kindergartners that are thirty kids large. We already have that. So the problem that I think we need to actually look at is how do we run this division more efficiently? And not, I think we've said yes to a lot, but we don't necessarily do it in a way that's cost efficient. And so I think that's what we have to look at. That includes several things that might not be popular, but I feel like that's why I'm here. I'm, I'm okay with making hard decisions that maybe aren't popular, um, because it's a change, but it's a necessary change. We are at the point where we have to make those decisions in order to be soluble, and I'm for it. So whether it comes to uh transportation and certain things around that, whatever it is that we need to do, I'm for it this summer and going forward to do that. I don't want to lose our staff in the process. That's my biggest concern. So I, my only point was when you were saying larger class sizes, we're there, except for pre-K because they have a cap at twenty. Outside of that, we are already there, and teachers are struggling, and we can see that in student behavior. We really do. Increase in student behavior comes at an increase in class size, and we know this. But we're not gonna attract any teachers to lower those classroom sizes if we can't pay them and give them the benefits that they need.
Ms. Melnick?
So I'll start by saying that Dr. Hamblin was over there saying that we are at twenty-five or below in kindergarten.
And actually, if I could add, in your uh book, CION book, pages thirty-nine through fifty-five, um, gives you the class size ratio, teacher allocations. And our kindergarten classrooms are capped at twenty-five, and every classroom has a teacher assistant in it. But I wanted to bring to your attention because the elementary, middle, and high school staffing guidelines um is in your book, pages thirty-nine through fifty. Thank you.
So, um, I have a request for Dr. Robertson. I mean, clearly, we're a premier school division. And we have all the bells and whistles for all our kids because that's what has always been important to this board forever. It's always been about growth, it's always been about being ahead of the curve, it's always about charting the course, it's always about being better than. And our families love it. So good luck with cutting, because the first thing that's gonna go are academies, middle school sports, all of these things that that are important to this community, that's what's going. And you sent us an email, so this is my request to you, is if you could bump that email back, I mean, to the top of our our inbox, please. Um, the email that listed what's at stake if we, like the supports. Um, that was a great email. You, you can't continue to add and to do more and to do more without offering the supports that these teachers deserve. I mean, they're already left on their own for a lot anyway. Um, but this is much more complicated. This is like, like Chair Brown said, this is not finding, or Ms. Vice Chair Weems, this is not about finding a hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars. And please don't forget, I'm gonna say this and then hang up. A hundred million dollars off the top of our budget goes to unfunded mandates, period. Do you know what we could do with a hundred million dollars? That's what the state isn't giving us, and they're saying you have to do these things. So we have a state problem, and I know the state knows that. And that's where some real momentum needs to happen. Can we make cuts here and there? You bet your bottom dollar. But the largest hunk of money has to come from the state.
Um, I just wanted to make one quick comment before Vice Chair Weems speaks. So I believe that emails contents uh is labeled February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five School Board Response, and it is on a tab on our website under um our superintendent's estimate of needs also. So I just wanted to point that out for the community as well as for the board. And um, of course, we can still bump it up, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was there. Um, Vice Chair Weems?
Yes, I just want to make myself clear, I am not advocating for larger class size. Let me just make sure, for some reason, I am not. I'm just saying, and and we as a board, years and years and years and years ago, we systematically lowered our class size, like for three or four budget seasons. And then one time, we had to increase it by half a student because we, we could not find that, you know, a few million dollars that we needed. So, but um, as a teacher and as a mom of five, five, six kids going through the schools, lower class size sizes are very important. Um, and I just kind of want to piggyback to, you know, we kind of always point our finger at City Council, but they give us half their money and and they've got, we've got education, they've got about ten other entities going after them, tourism, parks and rec, I mean, everything. So um, they're going through the same thing that we are. I would like to say, um, Dr. Robertson, I appreciate in your proposed um budget um that you have included the welding lab expansion, you have incre- included CTA pathways, the aviation maintenance and medical assisting programs that we're gonna offer on the base side, um, part of the city and the CTA pathways of the TCC student fees for the career studies certificates. So I appreciate that you did listen to this board when you did the CION. You did a, uh, the, the percentage of raise that we all talked about and we, and you did the workforce development. And those were by far the two common areas that this board tasked you with. So I think that you have, I have done exactly what we asked you to, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so to kind of close this loop, it sounds to me like there's some desire moving forward to have more conversations about how it is that we do the budget process. Um, it sounds to me like there's no changes to the CION as presented, being requested by six or more board members. And um, so I just wanted to close that loop there, at least that's my assessment of what I heard. Although I will, I will recognize that I, I think that the board is frustrated that we don't have unlimited funds to work with. You know, and and that is a reality and a constraint that we are faced with. Um, and we will always continue to be faced with how to do more with what we have, and that's, that's just what we do. But um, I did want to echo the comments. Um, I'm actually, and I wanted to actually express some gratitude to council um because we have a revenue sharing formula here in Virginia Beach. And that revenue sharing formula gives this division a hundred and eighty million dollars more than the state says they have to give our division. And so we would have even larger budget challenges and conversations without that. So I am very, very grateful that they recognize some of the great programs that we have and want to continue those. So I think so far as that, we now move on to Mr. Freeman.
I wonder if I could just offer one thought before we turn, Jack, can you come on up? First of all, um, thank you for everyone's comments. Uh, what is abundantly clear to anybody paying attention is that this, this board has leaned in to the budget um and to Ms. Weems and 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 Ms. Melnick because they were on the board when we had to cut money because there was no money. And there was, oh, can we even give a raise this year? Um, there were several years in a row where we didn't even give a two percent raise, where we held the step increase steady, there were no funds. The beauty of Virginia Beach is well beyond the compensation. The beauty of Virginia Beach is the support that people feel when they work in this division. And I, here's my example. I, I posed two activities to the Teacher Assembly Group, which is one teacher from every school, and the Teacher Forum Leadership Council, which is comprised of Teachers of the Year. Two independent activities I did in December with this group. I said, I want to generate a letter to send to the Appropriations Committee at the General Assembly in House and Senate. What do you want them to know your priorities are? They broke into groups, they did an affinity exercise, and they came up with their top five. The number one thing from both groups independently was support. Do something about the support cap. That was more important to them than their second, which was compensation. And their third was special education support. Those were the top three that were consistent for both groups. That letter was sent to the General Assembly, and just so happened that General Assembly came back. And and the most money they put in was in support cap. So it, should we receive funds back, there will be a bit of a dilemma for this board in that the General Assembly has determined that for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, should the sixteen point three million come about, ten point nine million dollars should be used in support of support cap. Two point seven million dollars should be used in support of special education add-on. That's going to be another consideration that the board has to consider when they're talking about what to do with additional money. Support cap could absolutely be used for compensation because in essence, you would be saying, I'm going to cover some of the support cap positions now through this uh funding, but that's gonna give me the same amount of money I can use for, for salary increases as a consideration. But you have to be cognizant, and this is not the board, this is for the viewing public, you better be cognizant of the partnership we have with the city. They are, they are having their own considerations about what to do with city employee raises. And and having been in this division for a long time, it hasn't worked out well out for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. We've gone in one direction, and the city went into another. So we need to be cognizant of that. The other thing, you guys have brought through some really good ideas forward. Just remember the first thing I said when I started speaking before this presentation or right after Crystal went. Eleven point seven million dollars in cuts. And I know some of you wanted to see that. And in my email, I shared, I'm concerned about sharing what that would look like because those are people on the other end of those positions. And so what I will do is I will provide for the board, so my entire team is listening because it's gonna be on you and us, to provide you the very best list we can give you of what we would need to cut to find eleven point seven million dollars. So you'll have that, 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 that uh information in the agenda packet prior to the March twenty-fifth meeting. And that's going to be a consideration you're going to have to grapple with when you determine how to use any additional funds coming in. I know you're gonna make the right decision based upon your priorities. I'm fine with that. I think the public needs to hear, you are not miracle workers. I am not a miracle worker. I'm not quite clear the direction I've been given from this board other than we need to find as much money as we can to be as efficient as we can to provide the best opportunity we can, to provide the best opportunity for our students and our schools and our community. And I'm dedicated to do that, and so is my team. Um, and so for the, again, for the community, this is a very difficult job you eleven people have. And you're gonna do the best you can. And we're, we're looking for some understanding, some education, some awareness from those individuals because you are not miracle workers, there is not an endless pot of money, and some really hard decisions are gonna need to be made. And I'll end with, but we're in a much better spot than we were in those years. We, we could not give a step increase, and we could not give a two percent raise.
And there is one more final comment from Ms. Weems, and then we'll move on.
Yes, I, well, I'm glad that you brought that up, Dr. Robertson, and and Ms. Melnick and Ms. Felton were on the board at that time when we could not give raises. But also, some were on the board when we gave a five percent raise recently. And and we have this, but I want the public to to hear this. A six, in twenty-one, twenty-two, a six percent in twenty-two, twenty-three, ten point six percent, twenty-three, twenty-four. So I think that that shows that when, you know, we have um made huge investments in our employees as we should. And um, and when we've had the money, we've really given outstanding, outstanding raises. And this is a tight year, and this is a year that we've, you know, don't have as much as we have in the last few years. So we're doing the best that we can, and um, and we value our employees, we value our students. But we've got a lot to work with, and we're gonna, we're gonna do the best we can this year. Thank you so much.
So I've been trying to find some sort of lighthearted transition into uh the capital program, and would love to tell you that um it's all wired and we're ready to go. But we have more challenges that you're gonna have to wrestle with tonight. The Joint Modernization Committee meeting convened last Wednesday. Attendees included two board members, that's Mr. Culpepper and Ms. Felton, and two city council members, Dr. Robertson, the city manager, and a number of staff from both city and schools. And I'm noticing there's a lot of board members that are leaving right now. Do we want me to continue? Sounds good. This brief is gonna be challenging to follow. Uh, so we'll go slow, let's start at a very high level. The bottom line is that we were told to reduce our public facility revenue box. Without going into a lot of detail about that meeting, we did not receive clear guidance on the target. So we submitted a draft that reflected a reduction in public facility revenue bonds by half, shifting the Prince San High School project outside of the six-year CIP. I'll show you those details in a minute. But the big picture is we submitted a proposal that reduced our PFRBs by the end of that day. And that's the same day that we had the joint modernization committee meeting. We received their response that night stating that we should reduce PFRBs back to what they are in the adopted CIP. So remember, adopted is the one that we're in right now. And we submitted that draft on Thursday. Again, Prince San High School would be outside of the six-year CIP with that further reduction. I'm going to walk you through those two updates that we sent to the city and then turn it over for you to discuss and provide feedback. We all know and accept that we live in a resource-constrained environment. We've just been talking about that for the last little bit. With that comes hard choices. We just had that exact same conversation. And you are the elected body responsible for those hard choices. Our role is to give you the best available information to inform your decisions and then carry out your guidance and direction. I'm going to walk you through an expedited flow from the last brief to give you some context and then share the updated information that we shared with the city. Maybe? Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. All right, so this is a slide you've seen a couple of times now. This, when we've shared this slide with you, what we were sharing was the work that we've done with the board over the past couple of years. What wasn't on this slide that is now relevant is the work that we've done with Davenport over that time. So as you likely remember, we hired Davenport about a year and a half ago to help us with numbers related to our planning and how it fit with the city's debt metrics. We hired them, quite honestly, because we saw the presentation that they gave to the city about the city's debt metrics. So it seemed like a natural fit to be able to support us to be able to get to a plan that fit within that challenge. We've been working with the the city and Davenport over the the last year to be able to develop that plan and execute the guidance that the school board gave us back on October 8th. Next slide, please. All right, so we've talked about this slide before. Inflation has been some a challenging force. Next slide. All right, so this is the big challenge, continued loss and buying power. $840 million loss in buying power back since 2008. Next slide. The the adopted plan that we're on right now, we adjusted our maintenance and we we matched it with inflation. So we didn't lose any more buying power on our maintenance side of the house. Consequence in a level funding environment is that the funding for new construction decreases over time. Seen this slide before? This is the path that we told you, the assumptions that we use in order to be able to execute what your direction was. All right, so this is our current adopted capital program. So now I'm going to walk you through the slides. I'm going to walk you through our adopted and then what we submitted, which you guys saw last week. And then we're going to show you two more. Show you the first one that we submitted, then the second one that we submitted. So here's what we presented to you for this proposed CIP as part of the CION. And you can see the numbers there. Following the meeting, we reduced the public facility revenue bonds in two years, two through six by half. So you can see the working draft and those numbers in red and what that effect was. Don't really need to remember this one. Just know that we submitted one, and they said, nope, go back again, and now make it level. So this is the one that has been most recently submitted. You can see $12 million for public facility revenue bonds across the board. And you can see the, we're about $61.8 million in years two through six. So essentially, unable to be able to address inflation as part of this submission. So that's what the the funding looks like for the last submission that we submitted to the city. So the next challenge that we told you that we had to address was debt service. You've seen this slide many times now, and this is the plan to be able to tackle debt service over time. Again, it's admittedly a challenging task that would be in front of us for this. So let me go back. That blue shaded area, that is Prince San High School's impact on debt service. So once we push Prince San High School outside of the six-year program, essentially, it looks like that. We stay below $15 million of debt service over time. We can still execute the tri-campus and the maintenance projects that we had briefed you on previously. Okay, back to the adopted plan. So here's the one that we're currently in that the school board acknowledged last year. Hey, we don't like the flow of this, so we want to work over the course of the year to be able to get the better flow. So that's what we started with. And then we updated it based on the direction and all the work that the board did and what you directed back in October 8th. So this is what we submitted to you. So by reducing public facility revenue bonds, the proposed outcome of that is that Prince San High School shifts outside the six-year CIP. And now with a proposed construction start date in 2037. To be clear, that's not a mathematically developed answer because in a level funding environment, our new construction money goes down to zero. And when you get just outside of year six, you actually have to start eating in the maintenance funding in order to be able to just do the maintenance. So that's that's how that's estimated. It's not an actual calculation. Then when you go to the far right, you can see what the total estimated project cost is. So that is, so you saw the number goes up from roughly 306 to roughly 500 million. That is purely calculated with inflation. There's no change in anything we've talked about related to that building. That's purely inflation. Bayside High School, again, we just pushed it out by 10 years, and you can see the the amounts there. Quite honestly, if this had been the case, we would have proposed removing Bayside High School and not had it on there if we had presented this in the first place. It's just too far out there to even be considering right now. Okay, so now we're back to the approved, so current year funding sources. Just using this as as an example, we submitted this to you. So we got the tri-campus with roughly 27 million in there, so we can cover the work that needs to be done there. And then everything else is going to Prince San High School. Prince San High School would have been fully funded in year six. So those are the line items that we're going to have to adjust based on the public facility revenue bonds. This is the first one, and you can see in red, they're trying to draw your eyes to it, what that means related to funding for Prince San High School. And 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 Bayside's been removed from that one as well from a funding standpoint. And then the final one that we submitted, the most recent one, that we submitted to city council is reflected here. And you can see in red the adjustments that have been made. And down on the bottom, you can see the totals match what the funding sources said were available. All right, it's a lot of information I took you through. I'm going to kind of just summarize. So I'm going to go through the last three slides, and you're going to see slides that are exactly the same. So this is what the sheet looks like of the effects on the projects based on that. So just as a refresher, this is now flat for public facility revenue bonds for the six-year CIP. And you can see the energy performance contract. You can see the red there as well. As a reminder, what we talked about at the last meeting, those are also public facility revenue bonds. They're just a type of it, so they told us to go back and put those to the amounts that we had from last year as well. And this is the projected impact for new construction. Something I didn't mention the first time that we went through this slide is, so right now, we're talking about the three schools that are up at the top, the projects in the CIP. But obviously, that's going to then impact every other school project that is outside of the CIP that we've identified as a potential need in the future. So. Yeah, so this was a little bit modified. I don't know whether I should stop on this slide or, because this was kind of finishing up Crystal's slides because we're, this is a combined one, and you guys have already gone through that exercise. So presenting you a challenging problem with a potential solution of that challenging problem. Dr. Robertson, anything to add before I turn it over to the board?
Yeah, so I would just say that, you know, mindset is important here. This situation that we're in is is not unique to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. It is what every builder, every organization that has anything to do with building facilities is facing. And it is going to require us to think completely differently to how we've done things in the past. Because I don't think anyone, including the literature I've been reviewing, is predicting that we're going to be able to continue to do business the way we've been doing business over the past 100 years, probably. We're going to have to do something different. So again, this is going to be a challenge. We're going to need the public to understand that if 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 they would like a building built that looks like old donation school, we don't have funds. And they can be as angry as they want to be, but we don't have the funds. So we're going to have to think outside the box, and we are going to think outside the box. When this budget season is over, we're going to put together a team. We're going to think outside the box and try to bring back to this board a a semi-prospectus of multiple options, as many as we can find, to help you, help us address this issue because we certainly can't have a building that is well over 100 years old and then have 80 more buildings that are over 100, 800 years old and we want to rebuild them. So we'll, we'll, we need to get through this CIP process, give us time to put that together. It could also be a workshop. Your retreat over the summer could be like five days, by the way. But I, it will, it it is not going to be sufficient to have a retreat over the summer for a day and a half. I think you guys need to be prepared for that because the challenges that you have are real, and they are, they have been laid at your feet, and they have nothing to do with each one of you. You didn't create this. You just have to address this. So.
Ms. Rogers?
Because why not ask a question? So whatever we decide to do with this now, should we come up with something more creative this summer? Isn't, this is not necessarily that it has to stay, is what I guess I'm saying. I mean, we have to do something for now. But should we come up with other, outside-the-box ideas? All of this can change. Some of it can change.
Let me, let me follow to see where your question is because we have, the, what you see up here, from what we understand right now.
Right.
Is an executable plan. That executable plan means that we can't do the new construction project that the school board-directed staff was the priority project. We can do the maintenance work.
Okay. But we can't, I mean, my, I guess my question is, like, should we? The six years, outside six years for Princess Anne is going to stay that way?
Oh, so, so I think the answer to that part of your question is, we're working every year to see what can be adjusted.
That's what I wanted to know.
Based on direction from the board to be able to see what's in the realm of possible.
So we just have to get creative. Say yes.
So I appreciate that comment. I will tell you a comment that I remember from a couple of years ago was the first one that Mike Callen asked. So Mr. Callen said, heard the challenge that was associated with what we're doing. And he said, well, you know, it was essentially, what can we do to to make it better? We've been doing the work. You just had a conversation related to the operating budget, so I'll share. And I think, Ms. Brown, I think you made the comment. We all wish that we had unlimited resources.
True. No, we can't do that.
And we do not have unlimited resources, so we have to make hard decisions with the resources that are available. Think creatively about what can we do better. You see the work that the board has done over the last year to think creatively and do better. You guys vacated a property. So we have taken a property, moved kids back into Bayside Middle School, done that. Tremendous progress. We have, you guys directed the staff to go look at the tri-campus model and see what could be done with the intention of vacating that property. We're in the process of doing that. You've received one brief. We're coming back to you. Tremendous progress. We will continue to go through that work and see what is in the realm of possible and support the school board with what resources are available.
That's what I want to hear. Thanks.
Ms. Melnick?
So there's no doubt that we build beautiful buildings. And we had Tim and Tony that presented to us all the time told us about all the awards we win, our LEED buildings. So I'm going to stick right there with the the LEED word. And you don't have to answer this now, but my question would be, are LEED buildings, you know, what is the ROI with a LEED building? And if we removed the LEED piece, how much money would we save? I think that's when we're talking about finding money somewhere. But I believe we have a policy with LEED, and so I'm asking that perhaps maybe the next time we're just given that information because it's going to have to go back to the policy review committee for a discussion before it comes back to the board, if that's okay.
So we can absolutely get you that information related to that. We've shared similar information in the past related to the cost savings that have been obtained through the capital program over time. We can get you the information, again, from a LEED, I think what you're saying, what what's the upfront cost?
Yeah, it's the upfront piece.
And then can we estimate what the lifecycle cost of those LEED changes are?
Yeah, that's why I want to know. Is there, is there really a return on your investment? And what it, what are the upfront costs compared to a non-LEED certified building?
We can 100% do that work. What I would also submit, there are so many conversations, and they're so challenging. I would request for the benefit, when I say the benefit of the staff, what I mean is for the benefit of the work moving forward, that we prioritize it. The things that would have more effect nearer term rather than trying to talk about something this year that won't be addressed for another nine years.
Fair enough. Okay, I'll leave that to you, and I'm sorry to add to your plate.
No, no, that's, we we want to be, and if you told us, it's a priority. We want to do it. We will accomplish it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that the policy that's being referenced by Ms. Melnick, in case my colleagues want to look it up or the public, is policy 3-67. If the policy review committee wishes to take a look at it, I just wanted to let you know that it was. Ms. Weems?
Yes, I I welcome the opportunity to look to look at that policy. Definitely. There's probably a not a time to do this in the near future. So I'm talking way out because many of us have often thought that we've kind of done the whole building things backwards. Like, we go out into the community and say, what do you want? The sky's the limit. No, no, but no, no monetary amount is even put on that. You just get in all these groups, and you tell us what you want. And then we have a building that is a, and I'm going to say it publicly, a Taj Mahal. I've been told I can't say that from past chairs, not you, not you. So because when you say, you know, give us what you want, it's just like if somebody came to me and said, Carolyn, this is your dream house. Design it. No budget. I'm going to design a whole bunch of things that I can't afford. And then we have to start scaling back. I don't see why in the future we don't say, this is how much money we can spend in today's money. And then it will be, of course, adjusted because of inflation. money and then it will be, of course, adjusted because of inflation and all that stuff. This is your budget, build within that budget. And then maybe we wouldn't have three gyms and then we have to strike one off. Maybe we wouldn't have, you know, all these bells and whistles because, like you said, we can't afford to build an old donation school again. I mean, or, I mean, we just can't. And so I would hope that we would relook at our process of getting community input and put some financial parameters on it so we're not in this kind of same boat once again. But that's for the future. Thank you.
So I appreciate the comment. If I could clarify just a little bit, the notion of the timing that you described is accurate, that we do approach the community. The notion that the community gets whatever they ask for, that doesn't match up with what actually occurs. So for example, at the Bayside, the first Bayside High School meeting, when constituents were broken up into tables, I remember this so clearly, there was a table and I was surprised at the table that it was, said that they wanted a waterfall in Bayside High School. You guys never saw a waterfall get presented to you as part of it. I use that as an example of that information was all vetted and things were excluded for what was needed. So there was, there's that piece. And then the other piece, and while we brought this back up, is in June, and this was a result of last year's budget process, we told the board, we're going to come back to you and we're going to present. So on June 10th, the school board got broken up into various groups in here and the sole goal of those, and there were different areas of focus, performing arts was at that table, I remember, there were some other pieces. And the whole thing was based on what's in these current educational specifications and the current design, provide feedback for where to cut. There was a lot of conversation about the auditorium, so some wanted to grow the auditorium, which is what, was it substantial cost? There were discussions related to, did we get the sizing on the CTE spaces correct? Because that's a substantial cost that goes with them as well. We talked about the gyms and I think we got to two floors. To your point, we didn't have three, we got down to two. And all those are reflected in that dollar figure that is in the Prince San High School. So that, all, things were all vetted down and the school board was presented with an opportunity to give direct feedback for how to reduce the educational specifications. So...
Yeah, I know. I just don't, I just think it's a lot of wasted time when you give no budget, no parameters, and me as a community member go to those things and say, I want this, 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 and then we spend hours and hours cutting it out. So I'm just saying, for the future, it'd be nice to have some parameters so we don't waste a lot of time and energy making cuts of what the public wants because they had no parameters to go by. But if we want to do it like we have been, that's fine.
Like I said, we are 100, from the flow and timing, agree with you that that's how the flow went and we, staff will support you on whatever direction we want to go. I just did want to be clear on, it's not just what they asked for that made it in there. That has been pared down substantially to, all the way up to this level.
Efficient, let's streamline and be efficient from the get-go is all my...
My question was, is the process that we've been using, that's been the subject of discussion, was that in reference to or based on an existing policy? Was that policy connected or was that just creative thinking out loud?
I don't think that was policy connected, I think it was best practice connected.
Okay. Then we don't need to change the policy, we just need to change our practices.
That is my understanding and if I'm wrong, I will correct that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rogers, did you still want to speak?
Okay. So I have some comments here. I do think that we need to look at policy 3-67, particularly because I have taken the opportunity to speak to individuals that directly do these projects in buildings outside of our division. I've taken the opportunity to speak with them and so I understand from a sustainability perspective personally, the cost savings times, but I think sometimes we have to have a building. So I think that's kind of in need of more conversation, so I hope that the Policy Review Committee will consider that.
Ms. Brown, we'll go ahead and put that on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. This is difficult because I don't think there's any one, I don't think there's any one good answer or one good solution. I don't think any one, you know, 100 square feet or 1,000 square feet over here is going to do the trick. I think, in all honesty, as much as I believe that the conversation where we took a look at the reductions, I felt like they were very specific reductions and I don't think that they were large enough to really meet what we need to accomplish here. And I know that we are not rightsizing buildings right now. I know that's not what the CIP discussion is, but it is a part of it and piece and, you know, there's a lot that may have been removed or considered to be removed from the community and then there's, there's a lot that's in each of those buildings too and they're beautiful buildings. I think though our students will have a great building, no matter what this board decides to learn in and I think that we will together find a path forward that works. So anyway, I did have one question though. Last year, there was a substitute of sorts, it wasn't a substitute though, it was the main motion to the CIP where it said explicitly that the board can change the sizing and the discussion later. Is that going to be in this resolution as well?
So, part of what I remember was, the school board wanted to ensure that staff wasn't going to do anything without direction. I will say that we can't do anything without your direction, but we're happy to put whatever language in there that makes the board feel comfortable, that we will await direction from the board before we move forward.
Okay. And I think for me last year personally, I can't speak for anyone else, but that was really all the difference and I think that the reason was, is at a different time, I was not under the impression that the design shretts were going to occur the way that they were. And so I, I feel like the process is a little backwards. I feel like maybe we could do those design shretts with some sort of specifications from the board and the RFP with some sort of specifications from the board from, here's how much we have, which in today's dollars, in our CIP, I've told Dr. Robertson this, I can't even tell you how much do we have to do this project. And so that is a question I've had anyway. Ms. Melnick?
Well, I'd like to address that first because I have been on a number of design shretts and it actually is good for the community to talk about their needs at once and for a building in their community. I think, I think that's fair. I do think it's fair though to say, hey, I just want to make sure everybody knows, we don't have an unlimited budget, but we are capturing everything that you're saying, whether we use them or not. But it is important to get, to not put those constraints on the community as much as it is about the people who have to pay for it. Because you do learn a lot in those design shretts. But I do respectfully request that when Policy Review Committee starts to talk about that LEED certification, that somebody is here to explain all of those different nuances, silver, gold, platinum, certified, like, that somebody's here to explain all of that so that, you know, the people making those decisions really understand how that could affect the change. Dr. Robertson?
Yes, so, one statement, one comment, so, well, they're the same thing. Good gracious, it's 7:18, I've been here for three and a half hours, all right. So, Carolyn Brown asked a good question, you know, what is in the CIP right now for Prince San High School? And so it's 176 million and we put 20 million into this CIP, it's 196 million, that's in there. So there's at least a number that you can go, okay. And Crystal, I'm getting ready to set up a question for you. We got 196 million, let's say we hypothetically say we want to build a building for 275 million, we've got to get to 275 million, this is hypothetical. I think for the viewing public and I know the board knows this, there is an absolute interest, expressed interest by the city council who said in this meeting that we had last week, why don't you just put more money into, cash money into your CIP from your operating budget? So my question to Ms. Pate, and just for everyone's awareness, let's say hypothetically, this board decided that they wanted to take $5 million or $10 million in a debt that we get from the state, take 10 million and put it in the CIP as cash, as Pago. Does that help us get to Prince San High School any faster?
No, $5 million will not help us at this point.
$10 million, would that help us?
No.
And why wouldn't that help us?
Because it doesn't get us to what we need for the full appropriation in order to build that school.
Correct. So what would get us that? If it's not Pago, would it, would it help us if we put $10 million in there every year towards debt service?
It could build a capacity in our debt service, which comes out of our operating budget, that in time, we would be able to pay the debt service related to the debt to finance the Prince San High School.
All right, I think that's critically important for everyone to understand. If we put $10 million from the state, and the only way we could do that right now is to put it in as cash, it does not help us accelerate time to get Prince San High School done. Because let's say hypothetically, we have $180 million in there, which is not hypothetically, that's what we have, and the building's 250, let's say 250. We need seven more years of that to do anything. However, if that $10 million, if this board decided that every year, they want to take $10 million more out of the operating budget and pay it towards debt service, that is going to get us quicker. The city does not prefer that model. Which again, puts you guys in a really difficult position as we try to navigate what to do. So this is just another awareness that people need to have, that you are not Houdinis and there are a lot of things going on that are going to be influencing the tough decisions you have to make. So that's just something we need to be aware of because the city council was kind of, well, a couple of members of the city council have indicated to me, they really think we ought to put more cash from our operating budget into the CIP. That's not going to get us Prince San High School any sooner.
Okay. I don't see any more comments. So we do have another special meeting after this. I've been asked by VBTV to make sure that we give a little tiny break. Is that accurate? Okay. So we are going to adjourn this meeting and then in five minutes, we will start the other meeting for the closed session.
About 10-minute break.
10-minute break? Okay. All right. It is 7:22 PM and this special school board, the school board meeting is adjourned.